All right.
Matt?
I call to order the Gladstone work session for April 25, 2017. It's 5:02 PM. Tonight, we're going to begin with the work session to discuss the transportation system plan update. So Jackie, could you call the role, please? Counselor Sickman?
Here.
Counselor Neese?
Here.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor McVann?
Here.
Counselor Reisner?
Here.
Counselor Mercero?
Here.
Mayor Stimple?
Here.
Could everyone hand to the pledge of allegiance. So take it away.
All right. Thanks, you guys, for joining us today. And I guess I'll just quickly start off by saying I don't think we've seen each other since we first started this project, way back in the early stages when we did what we called a transportation planning 101. Since that time, we have been heavily involved in the development of the transportation system plan. And so today, we're going to spend a little bit of time focusing on what we've been up to most recently. And that is really coming to consensus on what we've identified are the transportation system needs and what the solutions are that we've developed to address those needs. So a large focus on the discussion today is on those two subjects. However, I do have all the memos with us. Everything's fair game. If you guys ever have any feedback they want to give us at any given time, of course, now is an opportunity for that. But we also have a lot of different ways that people have been getting involved, and I'll get into that here in just a couple of seconds.
Matt, maybe you want to tell them who you are and who you are?
Oh, yeah. So I'll start off with introductions. My name is Matt Bell, and I'm with Kittleson Associates. I am the consultant project manager on the project. Back at Kittleson, there are a good number of people that are working with me directly on this project. One is Molly McCormick. She's my right hand, and she's been with us throughout the whole process. Also at Kittleson is Matt Hugart. He's the principal, the consultant principal, on the project. And he's not as heavily involved with day-to-day stuff, but he provides that sort of senior-level review and quality control on all the products. Also, as part of the Kittleson consultant team, there is Darcy Wodzinski from Angelo Planning Group. She and Matt together provide that sort of crossover between the transportation system plan and the downtown revitalization plan that is currently underway. I'm sure most of you are familiar with that one as well. And so throughout this project, and throughout both projects, we've been looking for opportunities to sort of get together and find out where different folks are on their timelines. We have looked for opportunities to have some joint meetings, joint community meetings and whatnot, but we have determined, just throughout the course of the process, that given where they are, given where we are, it just hasn't really worked out very well. But we do keep running into each other in terms of when and where we want to have our meetings, so it's been exciting.
Great. I'll also just mention real quick, I think, I know you've guys been meeting with the ODOT representative throughout this process. We have a technical advisory committee. We have a citizen advisory committee that's been working quite extensively on this. I think there's been a presentation to this traffic safety group yet, or were ...?
We have not provided a presentation to the safety group, but as Eric mentioned, we have, and I'll talk about this here in a couple of seconds, we do have a technical advisory and a citizens advisory committee. In addition, actually, maybe I'll just kind of dive in.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Next slide? Nope. We'll get there in just a second. So again, I'm going to just talk a little bit about needs and solutions, and then we'll open up the floor just for a general discussion. I would encourage you guys to ask me questions throughout the process, and any time you have anything you want to bring up, go ahead and feel free to bring it up. So just as a quick overview, in terms of our project schedule, we did kick this project off back in August of 2016. Right off the bat, we were looking at the different goals and objectives of the TSP. So how do we want to ultimately identify what are those gaps, deficiencies, needs, and solutions, and how do we want to eventually prioritize that into a list of projects that the city can then include as part of the TSP? Through October through January, we were really looking at those needs and deficiencies, and up until about April or so, we were developing what I mentioned before, is those potential solutions. Our next step that will carry us into about June is developing what we call a financially-constrained plan. That's whenever we take all of the preferred solutions that we've developed and the financial information that we developed early on in the process, and we develop a constrained plan that theoretically could be implemented in the TSP. I like to say that's usually when people tend to get most excited and most involved in the TSP process, primarily because up until now, everything's really theoretical. At that stage, we're going to start having lines on maps that says, "Here's what we're going to do," and then usually people have a lot more to say at that point. After that, that will be our last tech memo, and then we'll be moving into the draft TSP. So as I mentioned, in terms of just general coordination and public involvement, we do have a project management team that consists of all the consultants we talked about, as well as Jackie and Jim. Eric and Carolyn also play a pretty regular role on this committee as well. The technical advisory committee is primarily made up of public agency staff from Clackamas County, other agency staff within Gladstone, Oregon City, and some fire and emergency services workers. So that's a group that primarily focuses on the technical aspects of the TSP. We have met so far as a group three, I believe, three times. Citizens Advisory Committee, primarily made up of local citizens. Kim is nice enough to join us on that committee as well. I think he's been for both the TAC and the PAC, so he's been heavily involved throughout that process. And with the Citizens Advisory Committee, we also, we've met with those folks at least three times. We do have one more meeting on the horizon with them. Finally, we have had one community meeting. This was held back in, I believe, January, February timeframe. It got moved around due to the weather, but we had it over at the senior center, pretty decent turnout during that meeting. We had a virtual community meeting at the same time, so it's essentially the same information that was available during that public open house or community meeting. All that information was available online through our project website, where people could access that. We'll do the same thing again here in a couple of months, and we'll give everybody the opportunity to then comment on where we are with the draft plan. Finally, on the project website, if you guys haven't been there before, it's www.gladstonetsp.com, and that is where all of our materials are stored, all of our project materials, all of our meeting materials, meeting announcements, announcements for open houses. There is a link to the project website on the city's webpage. In addition to all that, we also have what we call an interactive project map, and it's just a Google map of the city that allows people to double-click and leave comments. So we've gotten a pretty good amount of activity on that map, particularly in the last couple of months. People have finally just started to discover it, and we're getting a lot of direct feedback from that map, and there's a lot of good information coming from that.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
We are years behind with this update. So when is the next update going to be required?
Good, great question. Typically, there are a 20-year plan.
Okay.
From what I'm experienced, is that generally, people are updating them on about a five-to-10-year basis, depending on the need.
I think we're like three years behind on this one, or four years?
Yeah, and in this case, there is going to be a bit of a period, there's going to be a period of time when the role need to update is going to level out, that's as the metro is updating their regional transportation plan. That is actually underway right now, and it usually takes a good number of years for that to be updated. And then even after that, there's a good number of years while that is the most relevant plan.
Okay.
So you're looking at five to 10 years before you think about updating it again.
Okay, good.
So with that, actually, just to make sure I covered everything there. I guess I'll just say one other thing about that, is this process is really driven by a series of technical memorandums, or it's organized into a series of technical memos. All of the memos, again, are available on our website. The memos that we're talking about today really focus on Tech Memo 6 and Tech Memo 8. So that means, you know, we've gone through those first eight. We only have one more tech memo to go after this, and that one will be the financially-constrained plan memo. And those memos are essentially all rolled together and condensed into the draft transportation system plan. We try to do a little bit better than just to cram all the memos into one place, but actually pull out the relevant information from each memo and use it to sort of build the backbone of the TSP. It's pretty typical for most jurisdictions. But one other thing that we're working on currently, Darcy with Angelo Planning Group is working on what we call our regulatory solutions. So these are modifications to the municipal code, to the development code, to both serve as, kind of bring the city into compliance with a lot of the regional and state regulations for code compliance, and then for just implementing the transportation system plan, and then just kind of generally bringing things up to standard. So one thing that we've spent a little time talking about recently is transportation impact analysis guidelines. So it's something, the city doesn't have real clear guidelines on that now. So being able to provide those guidelines is something that we're going to be looking at doing. And while that may not be a focus of today, that is something that we're going to come back and talk to you guys about at least two more times before we see you for the public hearing process. So of course, I'll take questions on it now and answer the best of my ability, but otherwise, I might have to defer some of the real tough ones down the road. So just as a background to our needs analysis, there is, as I mentioned, there's a lot of work that kind of goes into that needs analysis. We do, we conduct an inventory of the transportation systems. So that means we kind of go out, we use a combination of Google and just field visits to kind of get a sense for the transportation system, what's there today, what should be there, where are the gaps and the deficiencies. We tend to focus on something that we call essential destinations. These are the schools, the parks, the churches, the commercial areas, like along Portland Avenue, and other areas throughout the city where, that have a tendency to generate a lot of pedestrian, bicycle, and other types of traffic. So we look to make sure that the connections between these locations are available, or that there is some sort of an alternative available to folks. We identify all those gaps and deficiencies, and then we go through, and we do technical analysis from multiple standpoints, from a ped bike transit standpoint, of course, but we also look at the operational and safety characteristics of all these facilities. And the combination of the inventory and the analyses we put together, and we develop this list of needs. And so we really use this list of needs to sort of carry us through, carry us into the TSP update process. So we have this comprehensive list. We make sure that we share that list with as many people as we can, so that we have a good list of this. But I'll tell you that inevitably, more things will come up throughout this process, and we're familiar with that, we're used to that, and so it's always something that we're ready for as we move forward. So we're not convinced we have it all right at this point. We're still, we're just, we think we have it mostly right, but we'll be looking for more feedback throughout the process. So we then, as I mentioned, we take all that information, we share it with the advisory committees, we host the community meetings and the virtual open houses, and then we take that and we develop our solutions. So first of all, I'll talk about the needs. And I'll just, I'll kind of pause as we go through each one of these sections, so you guys, again, I like to get as much input as I can on what we've identified in terms of the needs for these various areas. And then we'll come back and also talk about solutions. So the first one there is public transit needs. And we have, and while Trimet is a primary service provider, and there's a limited amount of things that the city can do to really influence that, nevertheless, we do identify a good number of needs associated with public transit. The first one is one that has come up quite a bit during our advisory committee meetings, as well as during the community meetings, and that is just general marketing and awareness of the services that are available. So Gladstone does have a fairly robust transit network. There's quite a few routes that are serving the city, there's quite a few routes that come around the city. The frequencies of those services, the directness of those services are definitely into question, but in terms of just pure coverage, it's fairly well-covered. So just providing that additional marketing and awareness of what those services are and how accessible they are for the community was identified as a need pretty early on. Another, as I mentioned, direct service to key destinations such as downtown Portland, Clackamas Town Center, and even parts further off in the west was identified as a real key need, along with frequency of transit service, park-and-ride facilities, and just general amenities at transit stops. Those are all things that are rooted in both the inventory, as well as that technical analysis that we did of the transit system. Any questions on public transit? So we'll come back to this here in a minute, but one thing I'll mention, just in terms of frequency, while it is something that seems to resonate really well with a lot of folks, a lot of folks want to see more frequent service, more direct service, and I'll tell you that it's really a reflection of your land use, your density of those land uses, and how much is really going to be supportive of transit service. So part of our technical analysis, we look at the density of both employment and population within the city, and we look to see what level of, what level of density is supportive of various levels of transit service. And throughout the city, there, as I mentioned, there is some, at a minimum, there is a basic level of about 60-minute service, but there are pockets throughout the city, particularly in this sort of more dense grid section where that service, the service levels could be as high as 15 minutes or shorter, particularly when you get out to about the 20, 30, 20, 40 time period, whenever the densities are really projected to be a lot greater. So during those times, that's whenever you see those frequencies increase. And when we get to solutions, you'll see that Trimet has anticipated some of this, and they have started looking at potential opportunities to enhance that service in the So in terms of pedestrian system needs, of course, sidewalks are one of the first things that we look at when we go and do our inventory, sort of the fundamental building blocks of that pedestrian system. We look at locations for new sidewalk connections, as well as places where we could improve existing sidewalks. So whenever we go out, we look at both the condition of the sidewalk, as well as the width of the sidewalk, and the presence of a buffer between the sidewalk and the adjacent street traffic. So how much room do you have between vehicles traveling on the street and where you're walking in the sidewalk? We also look at ADA accessibility and ADA ped ramps, although we have a much more limited view of that. In general, what we see as a need there is the need to generally update ADA as available. What you'll see is whenever you're updating things like pedestrian crossings and other aspects of intersections, ADA usually triggers the need to review and update ADA accessibility. And, you know, it varies so frequently and so rapidly that it just generally is something that we assume needs to be done. And I don't mean that in a cynical sort of way, it's just how it seems to be. So another thing that we see as a need, and it's something that's been articulated in previous transportation system plans for the city, is multi-use paths. There's a good number of paths that have already been identified in previous plans that we think that could really augment, support that pedestrian network. There's also a good number of what we call neighborhood connections, or accessways, that sort of connect these cul-de-sacs or stub streets to each other or to other adjacent And I'll say just real quickly, as part of both the pedestrian and the bicycle system needs, we tend to focus a lot on the arterial and collector system, but we also look to the local street system when we're looking at providing connections between those essential destinations. So really, you'll notice that in our memos, there is a large focus on arterials and collectors, however, local streets do play an important role for particularly those local connections. So when we have identified a local street, it's usually because either it provides that direct connection, or somebody has already indicated through this process that that is an important local street connection. In terms of bicycle system needs, again, we look at, of course, on-street bike lanes, and there are, and while the city doesn't necessarily have a standard that says on-street bike lanes need to be provided in these locations, on-street bike lanes are typically provided on arterial and collector streets. Now, Gladstone is a little bit unique in the sense that a lot of your arterial and collector streets, with just a couple of exceptions, do already have relatively low posted speed limits. Doesn't mean that people are driving that slow, it just means that the posted speed limit is more conducive to a shared-use environment. So that's to say that when we have looked at on-street bike lanes, in terms of needs, we've also reflected those needs off of the analysis and the consideration to the speeds, the volumes of the roadway, to really determine when and where an on-street, like a separated on-street bike lane might be needed. And I'll get into some more examples here in a minute, but one example, clear example of that is a street like Arlington, Glaukaster, Dartmouth, other streets, where the posted speed limit is 25 miles per hour. Currently, there isn't, well, with the exception of Dartmouth west of, or east of Portland, there isn't really a width for a separated on-street bike lanes. But if you went to develop a standard, and you went to really to create an environment when you do need on-street bike lanes, that would be quite a bit involved in installing on-street bike lanes on any one of those streets. You'd be looking at removing parking, moving curb lines, redeveloping quite a bit of the roadway in order to accommodate those. So we try to be cognizant of what's out there today, what's really needed in terms of the analysis, and try to make the most of that, of what's available. So where there isn't room for on-street bike lanes, we do look for opportunities for more of those shared-use environments. And so you might be familiar with the shero, it's kind of gaining a lot of traction in a lot of different places, so we look for opportunities for sharos. Again, we look for places for shared paths, and we look for places where we can enhance bike crossings. I missed on my last list for ped system, that we also look for opportunities for enhanced crossings for pedestrians as well. I should have mentioned that, I apologize. So we look at intersections where there's a high number of bicyclists that are utilizing these intersections for various connections, and we look for opportunities to enhance those crossing conditions. So I'll pause for a moment before I dive into the needs for motor vehicles. Any questions on the ped bike or transit needs so far? Great. So motor vehicles is, you know, there's a lot that's needed, and there's not so much, not a lot that there's needed. Some of the easy ones there are these street designations. So you guys have a hierarchy of streets within the city that we call a functional classification system, with arterials sort of at the top, principal arterials, arterials, and then working your way down through collectors and local streets. So we look at those street designations, and we look to see if there's any needs in terms of, you know, new additional arterial or collector streets, or, you know, potential changes to those designations. At this point, I'll kind of jump to the end there and say that we have identified a few places where we would like to see some changes in those classifications, particularly along streets like Portland Avenue, where, you know, the way Portland Avenue is being utilized today, the way you envision Portland being used in the future, the way that the downtown revitalization crew is sort of envisioning that street as well, is not really as a street that provides, you know, this long, this, it's not a throughput street, it's not intended to be an arterial, a high-volume, high-speed throughway that connects other arterials to freeways and things. It's more intended to be a, well, it's intended to be a destination for a lot of folks in the Gladstone area, but it's also intended to be a more lower-volume, lower-speed street. So we've looked at some different classifications for Portland Avenue, similar to Dartmouth streets, to a handful of other streets where we've considered just different classifications for those streets. We also look at new local street connections, and what we do there is we look to see when the underlying land use isn't necessarily built out to its development potential, so large vacant lots or areas where new local street connections could potentially be made to improve that local street connectivity in the city. And of course, we look at operational and safety issues, and we have a focus in terms of operations on a handful of study intersections. And in terms of safety, we look at both of those intersections, as well as a more comprehensive review of those higher-level crashes, so the real severe fatal injury crashes, and then the pedestrian and bicycle-related crashes. We look at those on a more systematic basis. And then as far as the other system needs go, so the rail, air, water, and pipeline, these are, we do spend a little time thinking about the different needs associated with these. While you don't have any direct connections to rail, you do have rail in the city, and we do have direct connections to rail in adjacent cities, so we look to make sure that we can provide adequate access to those connections. We also look at trying to improve connections to air, but really, essentially, we have I-205 to contend with there, and there's really not much that we're going to be able to do about I-205 here, as much as the region would like us to. Water, we really focus in on making sure that we have adequate connections to water. In Gladstone, it's more used on a recreational basis, although we had some pretty great ideas with the technical advisory committee.
Uber.
Yeah. Have some great ideas about a water taxi from downtown Gladstone to Portland Avenue. I still think that's a brilliant business idea.
Is that Uber with a W?
Yeah, Uber.
Yeah, Uber, yeah.
All Jim.
Yeah, great idea. So making sure that we have adequate access to those facilities, just for locals. And then pipeline, there's, pipeline really refers to the water and the gas pipelines that are through the city, and there's a good number of those as well. So before I jump into solutions, are there any general questions on needs, any other needs that you think that we overlooked as part of this process? I'd like to hear from you now. And we can talk about this more holistically here at the very end, but just, again, in terms of the needs, a lot of those are really focused in on Tech Memo 6, and Tech Memo 6 is in its, I think at least its third version right now, so there's, it's really been through the wringer, and there's a lot of really great information in there, and I would encourage you, if you have the time and the interest, to check it out on the webpage, gladstonetsp.com. Look under Project Documents called Tech Memo 6. All right. So for our solutions, the solutions are really organized in a very specific sort of way. So we have some guidance from the general region about how we want to try to introduce solutions into the transportation system. So typically, what we like to see are those sort of low-hanging fruit, technology-based implementation measures that are way at the top of the list, followed by the really expensive, harder to fund, and harder to swallow for a lot of folks, capacity-based improvements all the way at the bottom of the list. So we have what we call our Transportation System Management Operations, or TSMO, is at the top of the list, and at the bottom there is motor vehicles. So any sort of capacity-based improvements tend to fall to the bottom. That's not to say that those improvements won't ultimately work their way into the TSP, it's just that we look for every opportunity to avoid some of those improvements as we So in terms of our TSMO solutions, there are a good number of them. They fall into a few categories. The first category is what we call our programming solutions. And these are, as you look through Tech Memo 8, that's, again, Tech Memo 8 is the solutions memo, that has a long list of potential programming and policy-based solutions that a city can take a leadership role, provide support on. And for those, we've really selected a small number of them that we think that would be viable for the city of Gladstone. The first one there is carpool matching services. And this is really, just, it's, the region has this sort of service that's already available today. Some jurisdictions implement these types of services, just to, like, you know, usually a spot on their project, on their public website, that allow people to meet up and identify opportunities for carpool matching services. Sort of one of those, again, it's one of those more programmatic-based solutions, it's kind of a lower rung one there. Next one is collaborative marketing. This is something that a lot of jurisdictions do in conjunction with Trimet, with major employers, or different activities in the area. So when you guys have some of your larger activities in Gladstone, working with some of these, some of these other agencies to make sure that people know how that they can get there. So it's like, how to get there type of information. So from a policy standpoint, the one that I'll try to avoid diving too deeply into this one, is the limited or flexible parking requirements. This is something that really looks, seeks to, a lot of travel is dependent upon parking. A lot of folks, myself included, feel like parking really is that sort of end-all of all vehicular trips. And so any parking management policies can have a real significant influence on how people get from place to place. So implementing various limited or flexible parking requirements can have a strong influence on how people are getting around. I think the way that this is playing out in the downtown revitalization, folks, is to look at various ways of modifying parking requirements, specifically for businesses along, or for potential developments along Portland Avenue. The one that we're talking about on the TSP is a more systematic level, and so it would apply to developments throughout the city. And then the next one would be access management. So access management falls both under TSMO, as well as in a sort of a general category, so I'll spend more time on that here in a second. Then we have what we call signal system improvements. So this is transit signal priority. The city of Portland has transit signal priority on a lot of their major signals, a lot of their major corridors throughout the city, along with what we call truck signal priority. And so what these do is, these allow for large vehicles, buses, and heavy trucks to progress through traffic signals. So imagine on McLaughlin, or on 82nd, or in areas where there's a traffic signal that you don't necessarily want to stop buses on their way through, or stop a large vehicle on their way through, those things tend to take a long time to get up and get going. So these types of systems recognize that these larger vehicles are trying to get through the signal, and they allow them through. It's just a more efficient way of operating. It's just a more efficient way of operating a traffic signal. Just a couple more. One is real-time traveler information. This is, you know, there's a lot of information out there available that's just readily available, you know, big data that's out there today, as well as real-time transit information. So both of those are, again, ways that tend to influence how people get around. They help people kind of understand how long their trip might take that day, what different options they might have available to them, and as, you know, as we sort of progress into this more integrated network of smartphones, and automated vehicles, and autonomous vehicles, and all these different things that are coming at us right now, this real-time traveler and real-time traffic information, transit information, is really becoming a more comprehensive way of thinking about how people get around.
So all of these apps that you're talking about, are these something that we would have to subscribe to as a city, or are you saying put these links on our website? How do you think we need to do that?
Yeah. So definitely, links on the website is a great one, and part of that sort of marketing and awareness of just the availability of these things is another really good one. Something that we see more, like, for traveler information, there are variable message reader boards that go up in some locations. I don't really see one of those playing out very well in Gladstone. Those are more for like a freeway-type of system, but, you know, ODOT Trip Check is something not a lot of people are surprisingly that familiar with. It's a great link for the website. TRIMET's Transit Tracker and TRIMET's Trip Planner are also another, are other great links that people can just provide more information for them to get.
Okay.
Yeah. And there's more detailed information about how this works with the city level within the TechMemo's as well. So in terms of our access management, so there's, today, the city has a fairly limited access spacing standards, and I think it's 530 feet sort of across the board. That is atypical today, not, well, I guess, atypical for jurisdictions that have updated their TSPs in the last 10 years or so. So what we're seeing for a lot of folks, a lot of different jurisdictions, is the lower classification streets tend to have a shorter access spacing standard, while the higher classifications have the higher access standards. So one of the outcomes of the TSP is likely to be access spacing standards for the city. Now, I'll say that as soon as we implement these standards, inevitably, we're going to find places everywhere where we're not meeting those standards, and that developers, as they're coming in and looking at what they're going to be required to do, are going to be needing to seek variances in various ways of getting out from underneath these standards. So we do have a variance process, as well as an access consolidation process. So that's looking at businesses that have more than one access point, or looking at two businesses adjacent to each other with more than one access point, looking at ways to consolidate those access points into one location. The purpose of access management really is to try to improve the flow of traffic along a given roadway, and to limit the number of potential accidents that occur along these roadways, both for pedestrians on the sidewalks, bicycles in the bike lanes, vehicles turning in and out of these driveways. So the fewer access points that are out there are, you know, the better we can be. One way that this might play out, and we haven't got to this point yet, but something that we've been kind of talking about, is, you know, as you're traveling down Oatfield Road and you're approaching 82nd Drive, there's a large number of streets that connect to Oatfield Road. Oatfield is an arterial, so theoretically, the spacing on Oatfield should be about 530 feet at a minimum, but nevertheless, you do have quite a few block spaces all the way down up into 82nd Drive. So what we're seeing is that there's, and this is both for the elementary school in the area, and just for general cut-through traffic, is a lot of folks coming down Oatfield and just taking their pick of Glaukaster, or I'm going to mess up the street names here, but like Glaukaster, Dartmouth, and all the way down to Arlington, just sort of taking their pick on either those major or minor streets in between, and working their way down through the system. Limiting those access opportunities to Oatfield Road, again, improve the flow of that road, reduce the number of, reduce the amount of cut-through traffic on some of these minor streets, and just generally improve access circulation in general. So it's just something that, it's just good system management techniques. So for pedestrian solutions, and I guess I'll just mention one last thing on access management, is our access spacing standards, is that you will see, access spacing will live in the TSP, it'll be referenced in the Community Development Code, it will be something that you'll see again as part of the TSP update, so we'll talk about it during our next two work sessions together, as well as during the hearing, so it's not, it won't be a surprise whenever this, when we see this again next time. So in terms of our pedestrian solutions, there's a good number of solutions that we've talked about, is, of course, adding new sidewalks, and there's various ways that you can do this. One is you can fill in the gaps in existing sidewalk connections, and that seems to be the kind of go-to for a lot of folks. There are a few, there are a few gaps that really play a real critical role for the city, and so being able to identify where those gaps are, and filling in those gaps right away before we start doing any more major reconstruction of existing sidewalks would be our number-one priority. From there, the other types of solutions are implementing the accessways, if and when we can, and whenever we're looking at new development, on some of these cul-de-sacs, identifying opportunities for new accessways through those areas. Implementing the shared-use paths and trails, again, if and when we can, and looking for more opportunities for shared-use paths and trails in the city. And then, really coming in with a strong number of enhanced pedestrian crossings. So there's a lot of locations that we've identified, primarily on the higher classification streets, the arterials, the collectors, and primarily in conjunction with either transit stops, or any place where we're seeing a lot of, well, where we have seen some history of pedestrian bicycle collisions with vehicles, as well as places where people, just general residents and folks have told us that they would like to see more crossings. So right now, there are a good number of enhanced crossings in the TSP. One thing that I'll mention, and it came up during the planning commission meeting last week, is that enhanced crossings are tricky when it comes to really assigning them into a TSP. That's primarily because at this, at our level, we don't necessarily know what level of protection is going to be needed for that crosswalk. So simply striping a crosswalk across an intersection doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to make it any safer. In fact, there is evidence that would point to the opposite. And so whenever you, when you're in one of those situations, typically, what you need is that, what I'll say is the higher level of protection, those are the more high-intensity crosswalk markings, high-intensity signs, those are the big green, yellow fluorescent-colored signs, and then rapid flash beacons, which is something that you guys are already familiar with out there on Oatfield Road. So it's something that we identify in terms of potential crossing locations, but in terms of the exact treatment that will be ultimately implemented out there, that's something that will have to be determined later on. All right. For bicycle solutions, there are, as I mentioned before, bicycles is a little tricky, and it really, we lean pretty heavily on our technical analysis for when we would be recommending a bicycle, an on-street bike lane versus any one of these other treatments that are available to us. One of the solutions that we've looked at and we've considered pretty heavily is providing alternative routes. So where, when we have a street like Arlington, again, where you do have low speeds, but you do have a pretty high volume, and you may not necessarily feel comfortable having folks utilizing that with, in like a shared environment, one alternative is to providing an alternative route, so using wayfinding signage and directional arrows to show people where they could go to bypass Arlington. And so one example of that would be to direct folks on to Clackamas Boulevard, and have them use Clackamas Boulevard to travel between 99 and Oatfield Road, or 82nd Drive in that case. So another one, another solution, as I mentioned before, shared lane pavement markings and signs. So we're not going to blanket the city with these things, but we're going to be looking for, we're going to be looking for specific routes that play an important connection for bicyclists, and making sure that those routes are highlighted. On-street bike lanes in some select locations, and then separate bicycle facilities. So these are your buffered bike lanes, you have a few of those out there on 99E today. Cycle tracks, when, if and when we can do those. Cycle tracks are, if you guys aren't familiar, these are those sort of separated bicycle facilities. It's a, they can be either separated by planter strips, parking strips, planter boxes in some cases. They can also be sort of elevated somewhere between the level of the road and the sidewalk, or consistent with the sidewalk. Essentially, what this is, is just a higher level of separation from motor vehicle traffic. Then there are shared-use paths, again. This is something that kind of works with both the PED and the bicycle environment. So two other bicycle solutions is, as I mentioned before, enhanced crossings. So when we look for enhanced crossings, some of these might just be as simple as painting the, what we call the transitional zones in a bike lane, so where the, where a right-turn lane crosses across, where a right-turn lane, sorry, where a right-turning vehicle skips across the bike lane and into a right-turn lane, there's this, there's this area that usually you'll see like a white skip line that extends the bicycle lane through that right-turn lane. Those areas, the conflict zones, or the transitional zones, or whatever you want to call them, those tend to, we tend to see a lot of, a lot of bicyclists get clipped in those. And bicyclists also get clipped in, just generally, whenever they're traveling through an intersection and a motor vehicle wants to make a right turn. So there's a lot of locations where we could identify some of these enhanced crossing treatments to try to prevent some of these right-hook crashes, some of these just general side swipes and other crashes, in these transitional zones for bicyclists. Finally, we look at wayfinding signs, and as I mentioned before, for the alternative routes, wayfinding signs is just a good way to get both pedestrians and bicyclists around the city, and usually, they are done in such a way so that they can, they'll point you to another path, or they'll point you to a destination somewhere in the city. So if you can imagine, if you're approaching Portland Avenue on Arlington, you might have a sign there that sort of points you to the Charlie Trail Bridge, or the Charlie, or along Portland Avenue on Arlington points you to the Charlie Trail multi-use path. I meant Abernethy Lane. So lots of different opportunities there for enhancing the bike system, and we're looking for those moving forward.
I have more up here, I'll share too.
So in terms of our transit solutions, there are, as part of our transit analysis, as I mentioned, we identify all the different areas in the city that show that they're supportive of transit service, and so there, while the city is generally pretty well-covered, there are a few areas where we could see new or rerouted fixed route service to try to provide better service coverage. Another area is stop enhancements, and one of the things that we look for there is we look at existing ridership levels at all TRIMET stops, and we look to see which ones are just meeting TRIMET's minimum requirements for the various types of amenities. So for example, based on the ridership level, average ridership level, they will either have a pole, or a bench, or a shelter, or a shelter with various amenities in that, within the shelter, just again, it's all based on ridership. So then, we also look for parking, another one of the solutions here is implementing more park-and-ride facilities. So coming out of our, we had this identified as a need going into our community meeting, and coming out of the community meeting, we had a good number of locations where we thought we could be identifying park-and-ride facilities. They were all coinciding with churches, and so initially, we had these identified, and I think they're currently still identified in the solutions and the needs map as being potential locations for park-and-rides. However, in retrospect, we probably shouldn't be identifying park-and-rides within private, on private property, so we're going to be rethinking about that approach, or recognizing that there are a good number of potential park-and-ride facilities in the city that could be negotiated or worked out with some of these churches. One of the pieces of feedback we got from TRIMET was that they don't favor church lots because there's generally a lot of activity. Also, if the church ever changes its format, decides it's going to have a daycare, it's going to have day service, or if there's ever any major fluctuation, then they really lose that as a resource. So they like to have a more permanent fixed park-and-ride facility, but that, you know, those opportunities might be a little bit more limited in the Gladstone area. We're still looking out for good places for park-and-ride facilities around here. So one of the other things for transit, as I mentioned before, is that TRIMET currently has what they're calling their Service Enhancement Plan for Southeast. And as part of that, they have a, they have at least, so the Service Enhancement Plan, I have a map in front of me here that is very small, so you can't really see it, but basically, they have a, for Line 79, they're planning for more frequent and improved efficiency of that particular service. They have two new service lines, one that would be provided along Jennings Avenue, and that's called Line X. Another one is Line W. They would serve Deason, Webster, Oatfield, Dartmouth, Arlington, and McLaughlin between the Townes' Center and Oregon City. So it's going to kind of wind its way through the city. Line 99 will be providing more coverage, and Line 32 will be providing more frequency and more coverage. So they came through, did a very similar review of, that we did as part of this process, and identified a very similar number of potential enhancements. So far, we don't see any issues with the enhancements that they're recommending as part of this plan, but there is really no saying when they will implement this enhancement plan. My opinion is that it's likely going to be, again, tied to those population and employment densities that we talked about before, and that when you see those densities increase, then you'll see more frequent, more service coverage from TRIMET.
Question if I may?
Yeah.
What's more coverage? What's the definition of that?
Yeah, so, yeah, so it is, it's kind of an all-or-nothing thing, so it's either services provided along a particular street, or it's not, or services provided within a certain distance of a street, or a residence, or it's not. And so the way that we define coverage is pretty much within a quarter-mile, we do a walk shed, what we call a walk shed, around all of their existing and their planned services. So anywhere there's a stop, we figure people are willing to generally walk about a quarter-mile. So we'll do, we do a little technical analysis, or GIS-based analysis, that starts at that transit stop, and extends a quarter-mile in every direction, and we then look to see which properties are within that shed. And that generally falls into the service coverage area. So the other part of that is the same analysis done, but based on what areas are supportive of that, and so it's a similar thing, and we kind of overlay those two. So if you get into TechMemo 6, you'll see, actually, I'll just pull it up here, we have some really colorful maps that show where service coverage is, where service coverage is available, and where it could potentially be made available, and where it would be welcome. So that's these maps, if and when you guys get into TechMemo 6. They're very colorful, and they show where, again, where service is available, and where it could be made available.
So for example, on Line 99, which just stays on McLaughlin, it would, more coverage would be maybe additional stops? Is that what, what you're saying?
Or more frequent?
Well, 32 says more frequent, so I would think that that means it would, they'd have more buses.
You're correct. 99 looks like it doesn't actually leave, doesn't actually leave McLaughlin.
Right.
So it's more than likely that additional coverage probably doesn't apply within the Gladstone area. That's a good catch.
Well, no, it wasn't that I was questioning, I was just curious as to what it, what it meant, because the buses, the 99 bus doesn't stop at every stop.
Oh.
It's like, at the shopping center, then the next one's going to be Gloucester, then could be Jennings, and then on, you know, up at the next, you know, kind of next light. I mean, whereas 33, which also goes along McLaughlin, stops at every one that somebody's there.
So in that case, more coverage could mean more stopping, more frequent stops.
Okay. Thank you.
But we do try to differentiate between frequency and coverage, so in that case, that would make sense for more coverage.
Sure.
So our motor vehicle solutions, as I mentioned before, we look at street system connectivity, we look at the functional classification plan, we look at for opportunities to either increase or decrease those classifications. And there are, as I mentioned before, there's a few of those. There's also a few potential locations for local street extensions, and we've identified those, and what those could ultimately mean for the system. We also look at freight mobility and reliability. We also look at freight mobility and reliability. And this is largely, this largely comes out of two places. One is that truck, truck signal priority at signalized intersections, either along 99E, McLaughlin, or on 82nd Drive. Another one for truck freight mobility is really focused on those congestion reduction measures along those same major freight routes. So really, our focus for Motor Vehicle Solutions is on the capacity-based improvement, or I'll say, safety and capacity-based improvements. So right now, we're looking at new turn lanes, traffic signals, roundabouts, signal timing modifications, and other various changes to configurations of a small number of intersections that we're seeing having either a safety or operational issue projected out into the future. So the example that I, the example that I gave to the Planning Commission is, I know it's a particularly hairy example, but it's the example of the 99E Arlington Street intersection where there's documented safety and, both safety and operational issues at that intersection. And there have been for some time. So I'll just quickly mention that that intersection, I've just got a few, sorry guys, I'll pick it up. Quickly mention that intersection is on ODOT's PIS list, which is their Safety Priority Index System list. And that typically means that they'll, ODOT will go out and do an assessment of their own, come up with an alternative and a potential preferred improvement for them. So far, they haven't done that. And we've been working with them to try to figure out when they could potentially do that as part of this process. In the meantime, they have reviewed all the different alternatives that we provided for 99 in Arlington. And they haven't shot them all down, but they, but they did, they did reflect pretty critically on a good number of them. And so I'll just quickly go through. So in terms of our alternative solutions that we considered for Arlington, we looked at a roundabout, which was pretty entertaining. Also, it would be really difficult to implement in that particular location for a lot of reasons, but from an operational standpoint, didn't quite get there. The one, one of the, one of the things that did work, or the three things that did work out there, one of them was blowing the intersection, well, that's not the right phrase, but drastically increasing the size of the intersection. So adding more turn lanes, adding more through lanes, making it essentially an impenetrable barrier for the, for the community. So it's not really something that we would be that supportive of. Other, other solutions that we considered, and we got a lot of feedback from, from folks on, was, was various restrictions on movements to and from River Road. So a lot of the, a lot of the issues on 99E Arlington Street come from River Road. And it's not just today, it's projected out into the future only to get worse. It's just, you know, it's kind of a bypass for 99. It's, as 99 becomes more congested, River Road is definitely absorbing a lot of that additional traffic. So we're seeing really high volumes coming to and from McLaughlin and River Road. So there's a lot of people making a northbound left and a lot of people making an eastbound right. So those two, those two movements are really what's driving a lot of this. One of the first ones we looked at is just cutting it off entirely and looking to see what, of course, the intersection operates great as a T-intersection, takes care of a lot of the safety issues, shortens pedestrian crossings, and really works great from an operational standpoint. But what that does is it shifts all that traffic to the north. It shifts all the, all the people that were planning on making a left on the River Road. They then move up to Glaukaster, they then move up to Glen Echo. And suddenly, the volumes at those intersections, which were actually already high to begin with, grow exponentially. And so we're then seeing operational issues at those intersections. They don't necessarily rival those at 99 Arlington, but they, but they, we do see, start seeing the need for more turn lanes or more, more improvements at those intersections that were not necessarily showing up before. So another one that we looked at was continuing to allow people to turn onto River Road, but just nobody to come out. So we're allowing westbound traffic, but we're not allowing eastbound traffic on River Road. It is, it's hard to conceptualize. I do have some sketches I can share with you. But that actually, that one is, for right now, I haven't, I haven't made my decision yet on this one, but that one is my current favorite. And only because it works without disrupting all the other, all the other intersections along the corridor. ODOT, of course, doesn't, they haven't, they haven't totally dismissed that one, but they're, they're not super supportive of that one. So I'm not saying, we haven't come up with the ideal solution yet for 99 Arlington. And I understand from talking with a lot of folks and from working on a lot of other TSPs that sometimes a TSP, the value of a TSP can be defined by that one particular location, that one particular improvement. And I have a suspicion that this is it for us as well. So we're going to be spending a lot more time thinking about how to really address this from both a safety and operational standpoint and...
Good question.
Yeah. I'll stop there.
So if you stopped off River Road or you made it a one-way, is it possible to make Glaukaster and Glen Echo with protected left turns? I mean, they're, they're too small now, but is it logically possible or is it impossible to add protected lefts there?
So today, it's called a protected permitted left turn. So that's when you get up there and you see that flashing yellow arrow. That protected permitted movement is only, is based on, is based on volume. So it's just, it's a, ODOT has a, has a policy that they implement on all their facilities. And so whenever your left turning volume and your opposing volume is, they add up to a certain volume or they multiply out to be a certain volume, then that triggers the varying levels of protection. It's either, it's either permitted, which is just the green ball, so you're kind of running the risk of getting hit there. Protected permitted, so you have that short green arrow phase followed by a green ball phase, or just a purely protected. So, which is just the green arrow. And what you see with the protected and what, one of the, one of the values of the protected permitted and one that you lose when you go to purely protected is protected permitted takes advantage of all the additional gaps that are on, that are in the traffic. You've all experienced this as you're coming off 99E and coming into Gladstone today. And so when you take away that permitted portion of it, then you're, all you're left with is the protected portion of it. And then you start running into capacity issues. So I like the protected permitted. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be safer at that location. And that's usually what it boils down to is if, if there's going to be enough gaps on the roadway, if there's, if there's enough volume or not enough volume to warrant that higher level.
So adding purely protected left turns off of Glaukaster or Glen Echo would be difficult. It would have to be protected.
So I think now you're saying off Glaukaster, from Glaukaster onto 99?
Yes, that's what I meant originally.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
Sorry.
Because we have no protected left turns on Arlington, Glaukaster, or Glen Echo onto 99 at all.
Okay.
If you stub off Arlington and 99, you're going to push that traffic back to at least Glaukaster and maybe even Glen Echo. So it would seem to me you'd have to add that. Is that possible?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. Much easier than trying to do it on 99.
Yeah, got it. Thanks.
So just as a side note, whoever figured out to allow us to turn left on Highway 99 deserves a medal because that definitely speeds up having that flashing yellow when the traffic's coming your way. That was a, that was a...
I can't take credit for it, but...
Oh, I know you can't, but whoever, whoever does, I mean, because that's something fairly new in Oregon, I think even, right?
Yeah.
It's like within the last couple of years. And it's great for just what you said.
All right. Well, I'll just quickly say that, apologize, I know we're going over just a little bit here, but we've got a handful of our, our next, in terms of our next steps is, as I mentioned before, we're going to be finalizing these memos, the Techno 7 through 8, or 6 through 8. And then moving into Techno 9, which is our financially constrained plan. We will take the out, the, the outcome of Techno 9 will come with us to the next community meeting, which will be sometime in early June. We were targeting June 8th. Now it looks like we're bumping into the downtown revitalization guys. So it'll either be a week before or a week after. I'm rooting for the week before. And we'll be presenting the findings of that to the community. From there, we'll have a good number of other, another, as I mentioned before, we'll be visiting with you guys in, at two times, once in June and once in August for two more, two more work sessions. There'll be joint work sessions with the Planning Commission and City Council. And then we'll start the hearing process sometime in September. Our first hearing for the Planning Commission is scheduled currently, it's not scheduled, but it's thought to be in September. And then our final hearing with you guys will be sometime in October. So that's, that's it for the presentation.
Matt, can I make a couple of observations?
Yes.
One, there's, I kind of looked, being in the beginning and following through all of this, there's kind of two separate parts to the transportation system plan, especially for Gladstone. Talking about I-205, we know what kind of issue that is, but it affects us. McLaughlin and Arlington, those are probably, vehicle-wise, our biggest issue in the city of Gladstone. But they're also issues that are completely out of our control. So you, as you go through all of this, there are certain things that may be really high priority, such as McLaughlin and Arlington, but they're not anything we can do, they're not anything we can do anything about. They're under ODOT's control. The reason you would take and have it high on our priority list in our transportation system plan is because ODOT looks at everybody's transportation system plan. And if, if we decided that sidewalks were our number one thing and put that really high on our priority list, because that's something we can do something about, well, that may move the Arlington intersection or I-205 issues down the list. So they're kind of two separate priorities, but they're both, they need to be there, especially the ODOT stuff, because from what Gail Curtis, the representative from ODOT, they don't actually do these TSP plans for ODOT. They depend on what the city's put in there, and that's where their projects come from. So it's just kind of an interesting distinction as we're looking through the entire TSP.
I'd like to also add that I just came from a meeting before this where I was meeting with ODOT, Metro, and all them. And that intersection was brought up to ODOT about them putting it up on their priority list and how can we get it on the list? So though it's their project, we can poke and prod and try to get it on their, they got like some wiggle, wiggle room money, I guess you could call it. And so we're doing what we can to try to get that on there. But it is their project, absolutely.
I was just going to ask, as Erica alluded to earlier, the Traffic Safety Commission isn't on this list to have, for presentation or to meet with. Is it possible for you to meet with them next month on the 22nd?
So, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have some representatives from that committee on our advisor, on our advisory committees?
You do.
Yeah.
You do. But one out of like seven.
Well, and they've been invited to all the, all the meetings. This one, the one at the planning and our open houses. So that's, they have been invited, but they haven't been specifically targeted at having a special session to them.
Wouldn't, but shouldn't they be more targeted, as you say? Being, I mean, they are our, supposedly our resident experts in this area.
I don't know if it's appropriate, but we're having a joint meeting, right, with the Planning Commission? Did I?
That was last week.
Last week.
Okay, so there's no more City Council?
No, we haven't had a joint meeting yet.
Right. Our, our next joint meetings with...
Planning and Transportation.
Right. That's Planning and Transportation last week. But it was more geared towards the planning, is my understanding.
Yeah, no, no, what I was thinking, if, if the council had a joint meeting with the Planning Commission, which they do have or do not have, there is...
They do. There's two.
So why don't, why don't we, why don't we throw in Transportation, or Traffic, I'm sorry, Traffic Committee in that kind of a three, three-way?
I think that makes sense.
There, there are two committees that, that, you know, recommend for us. It would seem to make sense rather than have a separate meeting just between the two.
I think that makes sense.
Well, I just, I think it's kind of ironic that here's our resident experts on traffic and they're not as a whole included in this or consulted until almost, you know, near the end. Just an observation.
It's a great and valid observation. I guess I'll say that we, we do lean pretty heavily on some of these representatives with, on the advisory committees to represent their, their committee. So just like we have somebody from, from the Fire Department, somebody from the Police Department, somebody from the local school district, and somebody from all these other, from all the different representatives of Gladstone, they come to these committees, they bring, they should bring the concern and the voice of those committees to our advisory committee and hopefully convey that. And through this process, and I apologize, her name is escaping me now, but I have received direct input from the Safety Action Committee in terms of priority, safety locations, like intersections and different things around the city where we should be spending a little time. And so there's, we have had input, particularly on safety-related issues from, from that committee. But you're right, we haven't had a direct one-on-one meeting with that committee.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else? All right. Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we need to adjourn the work session and then we start up the regular at 6:30?
Well, I think there's nothing that says it has to start at 6:30. We could, we could break and go a little earlier if you wanted. It's really up to the council.
Yeah. I don't know if anybody's coming. I don't know if the agenda went out to everybody that we were having a regular item or not. I think we should probably take a short break.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And see if anybody shows up.
Yeah.
And this, you know, this is, this is regular business. And if anybody looked at the agenda and says regular business starts at 6:30, I don't think we should start before 6:30.
All right. Well, then, does somebody want to make, do we need to make a motion to adjourn the work session?
What are we going to do, the second work session?
Yeah.
That comes afterwards?
Yeah.
That's the way the agenda was written.
Right. Make a motion to adjourn the work session and come back to regular session at 6:30 PM.
All second.
Motion made by Counselor Kim Sickman, seconded by Counselor Linda Neese. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Work session adjourned at 6:10 PM. I called to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for April 25th, 2017. It is 6:32 PM. We've already done the recall, we've, recall, excuse me, roll call.
Thank you.
Sorry. And the pledge of allegiance. So next would be business from the audience. And I think, I just see two yellow cards over there. Well, since we're having a regular...
Okay. So yes, I have two. Greg Alexander. Make sure you give your name and address. People keep forgetting.
I know the drill. Greg Alexander, Gladstone. What I'm here to talk about today is just, I just had two things. I went and saw Eric yesterday, and so I just wanted to just say, there's things I've requested public records and I was going to get charged for it. And so I just wanted to know if other people that were on the City Council or whatever could request them and not have to pay. And it says right here, Oregon, from the Ethics Committee, that Oregon Government Ethics Law, Oregon, Chapter 244 relates to conflicts of interest prohibited use of position or office for personal and financial gain and gifts of public or to public or city officials. So just with, you know, just, just a reminder, that's what I was talking about to you yesterday. The other thing is, you all know I went out and got signatures on the recall. And it's just a sad, sad day when I've got more than 20 people that didn't want to sign because they didn't want to get retaliated against because they knew people or knew they'd get, talked to about it. They said, just wait, you know, until the ballot gets here and we can do it. I said, you don't have to hide. And when the city, you know, the city's got people that's got to hide and feel they can't do anything. I talked to people that said they felt profiled and that they also have been threatened with a business license because of the way they looked and the way they acted. And I'm just not making these stories up. I've only ever stated the facts and I get proof to back it up. And this is just, it's really, really a bad situation when you've got citizens in the community that feel they can't come forward or voice their opinion because of retaliation. So that's just something, I just want to be on public record, whatever. So, you know, people can pull snippets and tidbits out and, and I want there to be things on there so I could never hear, you know, the council say, we didn't know or we weren't aware of that. I'm making you aware, just like I do the public when I go out and knock on their doors. So you're educated and informed. And that's what I want to say, and I want it to be on public record, that that's how I feel and that's how a lot of the citizens feel. And it's not a good thing to have a city with people that feel like they can't voice their opinions or write their name down on a piece of paper or be seen in certain places. That's, that's just a division. And, and, you know, so I don't, I'm not trying to badmouth anybody. And, and, you know, so I don't, I'm not trying to badmouth anybody, or any accusations or anything, it's just that, you know, from what I can see, what I personally can see, you've got a city administrator, who, if, the way I look at it, from all the peak times I've been here and seen, he's got a couple council favorites, and that's Steve and Kim. And I think they work together, and I think there's some of you council members being left out, and I could be totally wrong, but there's a lot of things that you don't know about the city, the whole council, so that's what I wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Linda Cosgrove.
That's pretty intimidating. I'm Linda Cosgrove, I live at 190 West Dartmouth Street, and I wanted to talk about the manner in which the city is taxing us. I believe in infrastructure, and I'm willing to pay for it, but I would like to be able to deduct it on my taxes at the end of the year. We have the, uh, Transportation Plan, uh, that we pay through our utilities, that runs probably about $150 a year, it comes on a utility, I can't deduct that off my taxes at the end of the year, and I'm taxed twice on that. We have, uh, the wastewater, or the stormwater management coming up next year, that'll probably be $10 a month, so that'll be another $120 a year, and if that goes out on the water bill, which is suggested, I again will not be able to deduct that off my Oregon taxes, and then I will be taxed twice on that money, again. And then I look down at my old water bill, and that's $50 a month for sewers on that water bill has been there forever, and I've never even tried to take it off my taxes at the end of the year. That's $300. I would like to have all of the city taxes come out on my property tax statement, so that I can deduct them off my Oregon taxes at the end of the year, and not be taxed twice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. See, you did it with time to spare.
Got three minutes to go.
Woo-hoo. All right, so is that it?
That's it, thank you.
All right, so the next thing is regular business, and it's to consider approval of a facilitator to conduct the city administrators' annual review. We had two consultants, we'd interviewed Paul Cook, I wanna make sure I get that?
Cook, but I'm not allowed to-
Cook, I, I just cannot get that right. Of Paul Cook Consulting, and Kirsten Wyatt of the Emerging Local Government Leaders, which is ELGL. So how would we like to proceed with that one?
Uh, yeah, I can, happy to give an update, as I understand it. Ashley's been taking the lead on this, as you know, but the committee did ultimately select Kirsten as the facilitator of that review. Right now, Ashley is in the process of drafting an agreement with Kirsten, and there's been a little bit of back and forth on that, and the scope of service, and so, once, um, that is sort of in a more, probably by tomorrow.
Okay, so it'll be this week?
Better, better, oh yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 she will get that, we will get that out to the subcommittee, so they can kind of see what, what shape that's taken.
Okay.
Um, the, I guess one question that we've assumed, it makes sense, especially in the interest of time at this point, because this, you know, has been, I think, a little later than everybody expected, since the subcommittee was sort of granted the authority from the council to make that decision, it's made that decision, rather than come back to the City Council with the agreement, and the agreement is really, well, it starts, and it won't be terribly different in any meaningful way legally, from your sort of template personal services agreement that you use for all manner of consultants, et cetera, would be to, once the, the subcommittee is, is comfortable with what it says, that the mayor would sign it, rather than bring it back on May 9th, just in the interest of time only. At that point, I think the, once it's signed, we can, she can get started, and proceed according to that scope of work, um, and, I think that's where we are.
I have a question I'd like to ask. Once we do this, and we get all of the information and everything, and it's all written out and put on paper, is there a possibility, and I'm sure there'll be an additional fee, and it, and it would be discussion that we would have, of, of doing like a 90-day follow-up after this?
Uh, sure, I don't see why not, I do think-
With Kirsten?
I do think that would be, something that would be an additional fee, be an additional service, I don't think the RFP contemplated. But if that was the council's wish, and Eric seemed comfortable with that, you know, I think it would be part of the review, so you gotta think about what the contract says, and, and, but yeah, I don't see any legal issue why you couldn't do that.
This is a follow-up for her, to see, you know, the action items?
Right. Okay. You know, and granted, we can do this, put it on a piece of paper, but you know, but at least having some follow-up behind it, and what the outcome is, how we've changed things, or what's different.
Yeah. Do you have any thoughts on-
Do you have a problem with that, Eric?
I, I just heard it now, I guess I'd have to think about it before I give you, you know, a response.
Okay. Well, any discussion? I don't know if we need a motion, because we kind of were already given the authority to choose.
Well, and that was my question, is I don't, didn't quite understand why we was even here, it was, do it, move forward, and get it done.
Well, originally, it was two to two, we, we did not make a decision.
Yeah, at the end of last week, it was, the, the, there wasn't consensus on who to pick, so, again, and the idea of trying to keep it moving, we proposed bringing it back just to the full council to make that decision, the decision's been made at this point.
We didn't make the final decision until Monday, yesterday.
Right, yep. But for transparency, it's good to have it out there, so.
The only other thing I wanted to mention, it's not related to Eric's review, but it is related to undoubtedly a topic of interest to the city right now, and that is the recall that's coming up. We typically, for all, whether it's a recall, which isn't, obviously is common, but, you know, during campaign seasons generally, whether it's a measure, whether it's a candidate, we will, we have a, sort of a stock memo, that talks, it's public, can be shared with the public, it's not anything that's privileged, it really just sort of talks about do's and don'ts, and, and really, it's primarily for the benefit of, of, of staff, because they're the ones that have many restrictions on what Oregon law allows them to say, to not say. If you remember, it's kind of like, you know, when you've had, you know, in recent times, you know, whether it's the charter amendments that were proposed, other candidates running for office, and, and a, and a recall, although it certainly is different than those things, and, and feels different in a certain way, is subject to the same limitations. So, unless the council had any objection, it's not gonna take a whole lot of time from the city attorney's office, it's more or less just kind of changing some words, making it clear that it's, it's Gladstone, and we were, we were gonna propose to send that out, so everybody kind of has a look at that.
And we'll get a copy of that, too?
Of course, yeah, and like I said, it's not a, it's not meant to be anything that's, it can be shared with anybody you want, so.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a good idea, in fact, we had six, I think, initiatives last time, and it was very important that we had that out, and I think there was some, we did get some feedback from various sources about what was appropriate, not appropriate, you know, to be discussing, from an employee perspective, so, we definitely need to reemphasize that.
Yeah.
So that's something you could get quickly, obviously, 'cause it's in process now, so.
I, I think that that would probably be also some, certainly by the end of the week, and if I understand from talking with Ashley, I would imagine that's probably gonna come tomorrow, too.
Okay, perfect.
Speaking of follow-up, I did get a message from LB Day today, in fact, I responded already, he wanted, you know, we, we all agreed to do a follow-up from the Saturday session a couple weeks ago, so, I think Tammy, he wanted to try to get you and I together on the week of the eighth.
Week of the eighth?
The ninth, I proposed the ninth, Tuesday, to follow up on some of the things that we had, had suggested at that, during that session as well.
Good deal, that was awesome, I liked that, the whole process was nice. All right, so the ninth. All right, anybody have any other discussion? Somebody want to make a motion to close?
I'll make a motion that we close the regular- The regular meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilor Linda Neese, seconded by Councilor Neil Reisner, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Regular agenda, regular meetings closed at 6:45 PM, and so now we move on to work session number two, which is City Council Rules and Procedures.
Yeah, I apologize, I should've said something there, I got a note about the 23rd council work session.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we've got the 23rd scheduled, it's the, whatever, 4th Tuesday. Jackie, did you want to go over kind of the-
If I could just real quickly, we have consultants coming from, I think downtown Portland, I'm not quite sure, and we originally scheduled it for 6:30. When we have to pay consultants to come, sometimes we like them to come earlier, and so I'm just wondering, we have two items that night, the civic building design update from McKinsey Group, and we also have review rules and responsibilities of the council liaisons, city committees, boards and commissions. Our chair for that committee, Councilor Neese, is not gonna be available on the 23rd, so, would the council like to just have a work session on the civic building design update at 5 o'clock, and then do the second work session in June, or do you want to do as we've already planned?
I would like to have Councilor Neese there, since it's her group.
So, we're, we're ready to go on that group, but that would put us down into the second meeting in June, which we're fine with, I just wanted to make sure you guys were okay with that. So, on May 23rd, it will be a 5 PM work session on the proposed designs for the City Hall and Police Department.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
Yeah, sorry about that, but just wanted to keep that clear.
Is that all right with everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay. All right, anything else? Nope, so then we can move on to the work session. David.
Okay, so, I know Chad in our office had been working with the committee on the council's rules, council rules, and we just thought, in the interest of, you know, really costs for the city, that it didn't make sense for both of us to, to be here tonight, so, I am gonna kind of lead the discussion here, recognizing that I really wasn't a part of the, of the process, that probably does have, provides me with a little less insight into some of the changes, but Chad and I did get a chance to talk today. So, and you do have a exhibit, which will ultimately be part of a resolution that, that you would adopt to officially amend the rules, and, do you want to just kind of go through what those red lines are, or do you want to hit what we think are the major issues, kind of leave it up to, I'd like to go through the red lines.
Yeah, yeah, I got a note earlier from Malachi, he has a work conflict and couldn't be on this, so I was going to just mention, the group that worked on this was myself, and Tammy, and Neil, and then we had two citizens represented, we had Malachi-
And then, Michael.
And, Michael, there he is, okay.
And Chad, who was great, thank you very much for giving us that.
Chad was there, yeah, and then also Chief Jolly was there part of the time, and so, I think the, the general consensus after it was all done, that it was a good, good process, just to even go through it, just to notice what we're doing now that conflicts with this, and what we do, just, it was a great learning, learning experience, and because of the once-a-year review, we thought that was even, you know, we really wanted to see that done, because we have a lot of, in a year's time, especially in the year that I've been here, there's been a lot of change at the council, so it's a really good education process, just to go through, and, and I think it was important to get the perspective of the citizen perspective, because they kind of come to these meetings, and for, to get their perspective, I think it was really, really important. Mike, Mike.
Should we have Michael come up and sit here, just in case, you've got comments or questions, or? And thank you very much for volunteering for a committee that you really didn't know what it was about. But thank you.
So that was, I didn't know if anybody wanted to say anything in retrospect, I know we might have a chance later, but it was, I think it was a good conversation.
Mm-hmm. It was really good having citizens involved, it, they definitely brought a different perspective. It was nice, thank you. All right.
So I might suggest that if everybody's had a chance to kind of look at it, that maybe we just go through it-
Section by section.
Yeah, and people can bring up, you know, what they may have concerns or further questions about, and go from there.
Okay. All right, so I guess we start with Section A, any questions? There's no red lines, but just in case. Nope, Section B, definitions? And Section C? Questions, concerns, comments?
Number five, why did that change?
That was verbiage by Chad.
Yeah, I think the idea there is that, it's, it's, it's a given that when you hold an executive session, you have to comply with what the law requires for those executive sessions. So, the idea here is instead of changing, it, it, the, the idea is to make it clear that executive sessions aren't required, they're, they're always something that's permissive.
Yeah, that was it, yeah.
You may hold them, you aren't required to hold them, the law actually specifically says, you can choose to discuss whatever you want to talk about in an executive session and a regular session. So, I think the implication, at least for Chad and for our office, was, this makes it seem like discussions that are subject to executive session, you have that authority, would only be talked about that way, which really isn't accurate in terms of what the law is. I, I think you'd always hear from us that, that's the way to go about talking about those subjects, for a variety of good reasons, and that's why the law allows them, but I think that's the reasoning.
So, in general, when we have executive sessions, you're the one that's calling them, in, in general?
Generally, I think so, yeah.
Then, does the council, the council's able to call itself into executive session?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Right, none, none of this changes by this verbiage?
None at all, no.
All right.
I had a question on number one, actually, number one and number two. This is, the last two years, we've been holding two meetings a month. With everything that's going on, I don't see that changing. Is there a reason that it's not, it's specifically spelled out, the second Tuesday of each month, and then work sessions, we can have any other time, but nor, what we've done, actually just recently, Eric, kind of changed the format a little bit, the first meeting is a city business meeting, and the second one is a work session.
Yes.
Is there a reason that we're not calling that out in this document?
It actually is.
It is.
It is, in fact, it was in the original, we didn't change that, that was what was there originally, that-
I don't see anything stating the second Tuesday of each month, I may have missed it.
You're gonna make me try to find it, or you want to wait till we get there?
I think number two certainly talks about work sessions.
Work, there certainly would be any work sessions to develop?
Right.
The charter specifically requires that we meet at least once a month, and that, I think, shows us-
This meets with the charter.
This meets with the charter, because it picks a day and says specifically, we're gonna meet that charter requirement here.
And I guess, I guess that's where-
And to do a work session.
I guess that's my question, is should number two include language that says, the fourth Tuesday, or, yeah, the fourth Tuesday of every month?
The reason I wouldn't do that, Kim, is because potentially then you're locking yourself into only having work sessions on the fourth Tuesday of the month. And you may want to have it on the, you know, third Tuesday of the month, or the third Thursday of the month, you know what I mean, it could be a different date, there's nothing that would prohibit you from doing that, as long as you've announced the meeting, it's a public meeting like any other, and, you know. So I would think that you wouldn't want to limit yourself that way, but- Okay.
That was the only, I mean, it just seems to be the way we're doing things, this isn't like a charter change, this is a fairly simple change to change rules, and that's just what we seem to be doing, and it wouldn't prohibit us from having work sessions on other dates as well. You know, just like the council meetings are the second Tuesday of the month, but you can have more than that.
Sure.
Yeah, so that, that was the only question, is there was a reason that we did not specify that there is a second meeting of the month, with, as a work session?
Flexibility, for flexibility.
Okay.
Anything else in this section? All right.
I have one, actually, one, one comment, I just noticed this, so, on number six, all meetings will be held in compliance, says that the Oregon Public Records Law, it seems to me that should be the public- Records Law, it seems to me that should be the public meetings law.
This came from Chad.
Okay, that was his language?
Yes, absolutely his language.
Because they're, it's all part of the same statute, but they're technically two separate pieces and...
Yeah, that would make sense.
You're not really holding a meeting with respect to public records, you're...
Oh shit, she said Oregon Public Meetings Law.
I think it's a public meetings law. I will talk with him about that, but I, my sense is that was just an oversight.
Number seven has the same language speaks about it, so, yeah.
Well, so that, that does make sense, that you'd have a, because in the Public Records Act, it talks about minutes that have to be kept. So maybe that's even the reason that got confused.
All right, so D.
Number two, if we, under number two, with the times, are they not assuming a 7:30 start? You know, we're saying, generally end no later than 10 PM, et cetera, et cetera. We don't necessarily follow this, but I think these times were based on a 7:30 start time. I realize that, you know, back on number one, we didn't put a start time for flexibility. But should these be rejiggered to show a 6:30 start time? So generally allow meetings to end no later than 9 PM, if council's still in session, 8:30 PM, then the council will decide whether to continue the agenda or move items to a future agenda.
When we talked about this, it was just recognizing that it's getting late in the evening, not so long, not so much that we've already been here for three and a half hours, and that, you know, before starting, something that's gonna take us longer, David could probably still remember, probably still has nightmares about our...
Midnight meetings?
No, 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 two, three o'clock, public...
Oh, for planning commission stuff?
Planning commission sessions, back in the day.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, those are no fun.
Pretty sad when you walk out the front door and bogies is closed.
[laughing].
And we did that a few times.
Well, I mean, there's sometimes, and I think, you know, with land use stuff, sometimes you don't have a choice.
Right, no, no, I understand that.
Because you've got a deadline, you gotta do it. But I do think the general kind of policy about trying to, you know, end when people's brains are still, you know, relatively working.
So leave it at 9:30 and 10, because we don't know what the agendas are gonna look like, and I'd hate to cut it short if we just have a little bit of time left. Anything else on D?
Why did the correspondence, the second one, go away, just out of curiosity?
I think it was just moved up. Oh, that, yeah, it got moved up.
No, it went away, didn't we? We used to have one at the, initially, last year, we started with one at the beginning, and if people wanted to speak at the end.
That was specific from the council.
And that was from the audience.
Public comments.
Yeah, or from the audience. You're talking about correspondence?
Oh, excuse me, yes. Public comments.
So we're gonna do it at the beginning, and then we felt that since we're allowing people to speak on the different consent agendas, that there really wasn't a reason to speak at the end.
Okay.
Or the different agendas.
Yeah, and I think, I think the confusion was, it just sort of appeared one time, and I think, as Mayor mentioned, we, now that, and we've actually instituted this process where we, we get feedback on, prior to the council vote, after the staff report, and after...
After we have discussion.
Yeah, discussion, so...
And it now says, public comments. Michael, are you happy with that? I remember you had, you had some...
Yeah, yeah.
I know where that came from.
I think I was the one who said at one point that, you know, that we are not an audience, because you are not performers, so I preferred the term, public comments. So I'm glad that got in there.
So that is a big yes. Yes.
Cool.
Okay, anything else on D? All right, E, council discussions and decorum.
And number one, has the meaning changed by that red line?
Uh, yes, in a sense it has, because what the concern was there, or the issue was there, is that the, you know, this is the council, right? And the council really doesn't deliver public services. I mean, the nitty gritty of it, really, staff does that.
Sure.
So it just seemed to be more of a, it didn't seem to be the correct way to categorize how the council will conduct discussions and act in a non-discriminatory manner. That's still there, but the ensuring delivery, ensuring discriminatory, non-discriminatory delivery of public services, I think that the thought was, it seems a little bit beyond what the council rules really are even able to do. I mean, that's not to say that that shouldn't happen, and of course it should, but is this necessarily the place for that to be spelled out?
So kind of what you've done is, you've just taken out the public services part of that.
Yeah, and focused on, you know, again, if you look at, this is about council discussion and decorum.
Right.
So, you know, the council will conduct itself in a manner, and act in a non-discriminatory manner. Of course, we, we have legal obligations, and, you know, I think most of us would agree, just civic obligations to not act, to provide services in a non-discriminatory, but it just doesn't seem like it's the place to have that, that truth spelled out, so...
Okay, anything else in this section? All right, the next section is F, motions.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize that E continued on. I do have some comments under, a couple of general comments about the document in general. You know, you know my concept of the word shall, it appears in here many places, it would be nice to clear that up. But there's also a lot of old language in regard to gender. In this section, there is a his or her, as you go farther down, under the next section, number seven, there's a he slash she. You know, some of that old gender language really could be cleaned up. Otherwise...
So put it in more of a, like, if it's possible to say, let's see, give me, let me just find the one example, see if it reads the way I would expect.
When recognized by the mayor, then state their name for the record.
Steve, can you give me the...
I'm sorry, 4B, last sentence, second to last sentence.
I see.
Yeah, then state their name for the record.
Sure.
I don't know, I don't know what, you know, what the current proper way of writing that is, but, I mean, this was originally written way back when, and it said, then state his name for the record. And then they've changed it to add his/her, but that's really kind of an old style.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, hardcore grammarians might say, there is plural, him or her is singular, but I totally understand your point.
Yeah, okay.
Got it.
All right, section F, motions. Nothing? All right, next section is G, council member conduct. Any questions, discussions?
Number one A, I think I've got the right one. Whether the statement reflects personal opinion or official position of the city council. What did I have here? I'm sorry, I had something with that, but it didn't read right to me for some reason.
And I beg your pardon again, can you give me the, I was just writing it down, I lost...
You didn't have anything?
Well, it was G, G1A.
G, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I've lost what I had written in my notes, but there's something about that that bothered me.
Okay.
Um, B is, if council members representing the city, the council member must support and advocate for the official city position on the issue rather than a personal viewpoint. I've got that. But is silence on an issue an acceptable way to meet this requirement? I mean, Robert's Rules of Orders suggests that silence on an issue means support.
Can mean consent, yes.
Yes.
You know, certainly, I think that there's nothing in your individual capacity, even as an individual counselor, where you can be compelled to say something.
That's the question I'm trying to ask, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, I think staying silent on something wouldn't, wouldn't, would not be considered to be, to be contrary to the subsection B, would not be, I don't, I wouldn't look at that and say, oh, so you're, by not speaking, you are now in opposition to it. Does that get to your question?
I think you've answered that, yes. Okay, I got it, I have nothing more on that.
Anybody else on G? All right, H, confidentiality.
I'm sorry, Mayor, one more real quick under G. G1C, council members should obtain the appropriate information before, I think that word should be will. Council members will obtain the appropriate permission before representing other council members' view of position in the media. Promise that's it in that section.
Was there any talk at the, at the, at the committee level about, you know, should is permissive?
I don't remember it being a should or a will discussion, I think it was just the sentence as a whole.
I think the intent was a will, I don't think there was...
I agree, we were...
Yeah, I don't think...
...discussed that we don't want to be speaking for others without their permission.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that will makes more sense, because, you know, the idea is just that, where, you know, you should be confident that if one speaks and represents, you know, the position of others, that they agree with you, so...
Okay, all right. H, confidentiality.
Yes, I have one here. H1, after the red line, the sentence reads, no mention of the information read or heard should be made available to anyone other than council members, city administrator, city attorney, or others as approved by city council. I'd like it to be considered to add the words, in a public meeting, at the back of that. So therefore, approving this discussion with people other than administrator, council attorney, or each other, that that decision should be, should be made in a public meeting.
I guess I'm not understanding what you're saying.
Well, in general, we're able to, to make, to discuss executive confidential information with the people that are listed. If we're going to add somebody, we should be, we should be enunciating that in public, that these people are going to be included in, in an issue. We've done it before with executive sessions, where we've found an executive session, and we said, based on discussion in executive session, make the following motion. So I don't think you betray that. But I think that the people should know who is involved with confidential information.
I think the discussion on, were you gonna say something?
Well, I...
Please, go ahead.
It just occurs to me that possibly the identity of a person with whom you would be allowed to discuss, might itself be a matter that you would want to keep confidential. So you discuss it in an executive session, but if you are going to consult with, say, a real estate person representing the council in the purchase of property or something like that, you may or may not want to divulge the identity of that person. And I think that's probably what we were thinking here. It's not just limited to attorneys, but it might also be someone acting in a consulting or representative manner on behalf of the council, whose identity it would behoove you to keep confidential. I mean, that's, I'm just speculating on a situation, I don't know enough about the things you've discussed, but I think that's probably what the thinking was at the time.
And this doesn't preclude us from doing what you're saying, in that we could...
If it's appropriate.
Appropriate, do it in, you know...
In the executive session?
Well, or, no, do it in a public session.
Public, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And not divulge, yeah. Okay, anything else in H? All right, I, communication with staff.
I have something that is not redlined, it's I1C. I believe that the last sentence could be cleaned up to solve, help solve some of these problems, we still continue to have these. The sentence that I would have its read is, to this end, council members will not request city staff to perform work without the prior approval of the city administrator. I think that that would clean that sentence up a lot and make it very clear.
I think it's fine the way it is.
Well, who's defining what significant work is? Well, but he, if you don't...
Eric?
If you don't consult with him prior...
Or the staff member.
And so that workloads and work plans are not adversely impacted, who's making that determination?
I hate the word significant, I always have.
Yep, it's a weasel word.
But the word you want changed is a shall to will, is that correct?
That's, that's one of them, yes.
Wants the whole last portion of that stricken.
And the word significant removed.
So would you say that one more time then, please?
Sure, I would have it read, to this end, council members will not request staff to perform work without the prior approval of the city administrator, period.
So does that mean we couldn't ask for information that a general, someone off the street could ask for, that wouldn't, wouldn't be a public records request?
I certainly think that if the public would be required to fill out a public records request, that the council should not be asking staff to do that work without the administrator's approval.
I think the way it is, it's clear, but...
You know, significant does present one of those issues about, you know, what does it mean? I do think it's, I do think it's tied, however maybe, you know, imprecisely, to something that ends, the last sentence ends with, so that basically it's not creating a, you know, disruption, a, you know, big disruption, any significant disruption. Act is significant. You know, in that person's work. I think, I don't know, I'm not here every day, I certainly don't mean to represent this. I think there was a time, you know, not too long ago, where, where people felt that was the case, that there was work being asked of certain people that, you know, was more than just, hey, here's a, you know, can you get me the address of blah, blah, blah? Or can you, you know, something that's really kind of ministerial and isn't gonna take more than, you know, a minute or two?
I think this puts it in context, so that you have something definitive to look at, said, oh, well, this is gonna impact workload, or work plan, so we can't do this.
Sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna ask, like, recently we were sent electronic results of the parts master, master plan survey. And so I asked Jim for a hard copy. So what, the way you're wanting it to be worded, I'd need to go to Eric, to ask permission from Eric, to go to Jim, to have a 20-page report printed out.
Yes, absolutely.
But that, but he's got better things to do at this time. Now, now if I, if, if I wanted a, a report of the whole master plan, I would agree with you.
Yeah.
But a, but a, you know, a 17-page report that we already got, I'm just asking that to be put in paper. We're paying $120,000 a year.
I think that a simple email would clear that up. I mean, if I have requests of staff, I send them to Eric. I mean, all of them. I don't request naming of staff. So I would not have done it that way, I would have, I would have asked Eric for that, but...
Well, the information was already given to us, so it's not like I'm, like, getting information that he's not aware of, just in a different form.
I mean, we're tiptoeing in the minutia here, but you do own a printer and a computer, couldn't you have printed it yourself?
Well, if it's one or two pages, I do, but when it's 20, 30-page long report, no. I mean, you know, I don't make, you know, gobs of money, like, some, and we don't make anything sitting up here.
Understand that.
So, you know, it's not that I have everything printed, so that's why I think that the wording should, should stay.
To me, this all comes down to the last part of the second sentence. The intent of this entire paragraph is that, so workloads and work plans are not adversely impacted. You know, something like your, your example was probably 15 minutes.
More, 15 seconds maybe, but, okay.
The phone call from you, finding it, getting it all printed, getting it ready for you to pick up, whatever, okay? But then when you times that by seven counselors, we're now almost at two hours.
Well, I disagree with the 15 minutes.
Okay, well, I just drew a number.
Probably a half hour.
Well...
Instead, we have...
Can I finish my thought?
Yes.
So is where I'm going with this, the main thing is, so workloads and work plans are not adversely impacted. Eric, what do you consider as significant time that you would rather not have your employees doing other things that you're not aware of? And I don't mean that they're being done secretively, but they're not on task for something that they were scheduled to do.
Yeah, I love getting involved in these kind of discussions. Because it's fun. Because you can never...
Can't win.
Can't win, there you go, can't win. You know, I guess, again, it just really depends on... Um, you know, I guess, again, it just really depends on, uh, I, I like the language that talks about the workloads are not adversely impacted, and I, I like the fact that, um, that there's a recognition that that's, in other words, a request even as minute as that doesn't just automatically slide up to number one if they're involved in other kinds of things. And, uh, because, let, I'll just tell you, whenever you get a call from the counselor, they're going to get right on it and they'll, something will, will, will suffer as a result. Um, that's just the way they are. That's the way, you know, they see you guys as, as the ultimate authority and they want to please you. So that's, and, and I don't really see any, you know, we email all the time, throw me on the CC is really all, all we're talking about. It's not anything more than that. It's not saying, um, don't do it, or, you know, switch it around, send it to me and copy it to the person that's going to actually request it. I think that just makes it easier for everybody because sometimes it can get, uh, a little confusing and they don't tend to respond or react to the counselor. They respond and react to me. And a lot of times, the, uh, the, the situation is when things have slipped or a, a project deadline has slipped in that it's just, I think it's just easier for them to have that, that buffer, quite frankly. I think they appreciate that. That's my sense. But I think there's some combination of words here that should accomplish that without throwing out either, I like, I like that last, so that workloads or plans are adversely impacted.
Right. It gives a reason. It gives a context of why we're doing this.
And I think, um, I think that's significant is, is, is a tough, tough one to, to define. Um, the one that I, I always use as far as significant, when the context of if I get a request, is the one-hour rule. If it's going to take more than one hour to do, then I say, go to the council and get that, that permission unless you've already, you know, through some, uh, direction have gotten that already, or, you know, um, that kind of thing. Um, or, you know, we're meeting because there is a liaison responsibility, those, those kinds of, I mean, there's always ways of, of looking at it differently, but to give you the magic answer, I'm not sure I'm, I'm there, but.
I suppose one thing you could do is, is have it such that, you know, a request for staff to perform work of any type, one thing this could say is that that be in an email. You know, request it in, in writing. I mean, it doesn't mean you can't make the request orally, but at least put it in writing and, and copy Eric.
Actually, that, I'm pretty sure if I look back, that's what I did, I just replied, replied all, and you were, would have been in the CC. You know, because I, there are times, I mean, I ran into it, uh, here a month or so ago. We was preparing for a city council meeting. I all of a sudden felt that I needed an employee's handbook. Okay. Eric wasn't available, Jackie wasn't available. We're running down to the wire and there was information that I really needed, or I felt I needed for the city council meeting. So I, I came over, they were both in meetings. So I stuck my head around to Tammy Bannick and I said, do you have access to an employee's handbook? I need it for this evening's meeting. And I realize I'm supposed to go to Eric for this, but he's in a meeting. Is, uh, would it take long for you to produce that for me either electronically or whatever simply? She says, I can do that with a simple email. And by the time I walked back home, it was done. Now, I did follow up with an email to Eric stating that I, just for his information, that I had contacted an employee and I didn't feel it qualified as a significant request, but so you know I did take some of your employees' time to do this. So I think there are times we're all going to need to do something like that. And I don't think it's to limit that, but we certainly don't want, um, and like I said before, if all seven of us came to the same, the same week, to the same employee, they'd be two hours behind. So I would think that it would, and it can cause more trouble than not, but if we put 15 minutes in there, take, you know, if you go to an employee and say, I would like to know if you can do this, can that be done within 15 minutes? If it takes more than fif- and I'm not, 15 minutes is not the given number, just for discussion purposes. If it's going to take more than 15 minutes, I need to get authorization from, it needs to go through the city manager. And that was just kind of, the word significant is just way too broad that.
But we have department heads.
Yes.
So wouldn't they have some responsibility too? I mean, Eric has hired these people and they, and, um, and he's got to have the confidence and trust in them and so, and, and he, and his time is valuable. And to me, that's like micromanaging everything that's going on. And if it's just, you know, it's just a small little thing you're requesting and asking, why can't you go to the department head and, and talk to them and say, I need this? Or can you get, can this be done at a later on in the day? You know, you're not going to. And then you can still CC the department head or send the memo to the department head and CC Eric. He knows what's going on, but we have these department heads and so what's their purpose?
They don't work for us. They don't report to us.
Correct.
They don't work for us.
But they, yes, but no, they don't work for us, but he does. But he's hired these people and they are, can be responsible as well.
Yep.
It's just like in the private sector. You have a, you have a boss, you have department heads, and those department heads, communication with their staff.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to be inundated all day long with stuff like this. I'm sorry, but that's my opinion, Eric.
We shouldn't typically have that, but.
No, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm sorry.
We shouldn't typically have all that much stuff. I mean, we should be organized enough that, that that doesn't happen. But I'll say one more thing about this, I, I think Kim touched on it, is that if we make a request, we become the highest priority immediately. And so we're reprioritizing people's workloads. And that's, that's not right. I mean, we have to be very careful about that.
Well, and I agree. And I mean, but there's been a few little things that I've asked for, but I've always said, you know, put me at the end. I, I am, I'm in no hurry.
If it's an emergency, then you.
Right. That's a different.
Truck Eric down.
But I have never had to ask for anything that was an emergency, that I needed it instantly.
David, can we do anything with this language, or is it a lost cause?
No, I mean, it, I, but it's, it's, you know, not to just throw the ball back in your court, but I think it's one of those things that demands some consensus from all of you because it, it is specific to how all of you would interact with Eric and by extension with people that would be working underneath him. Um, I, I don't know, I, I mean, the idea of it being like a, you know, either trying to, I mean, we can massage this, certainly, uh, if the council's, you know, minimal, but either A, trying to start with a, a, a department head rather than, you know, and if, for some reason, that's not feasible, then, then working one's way down to somebody, you know, at a lower level. Um, or having something like him describes as basically a good faith, you know, request to, to staff to say, look, if this is going to take more than X amount of your time right now, I will go to Eric and, and, and seek that, you know, through, through him.
I recall.
I mean, that seems reasonable, but.
I recall somewhere, and maybe it was in regard to attorney time, that, uh, maybe it was the West Lynn Council rules, uh, that did reference 15 minutes somewhere along the line.
Okay.
So that might be a place to, to try to start this, but, um, I, I think this, this needs, this needs some change.
Pat, you had something to say?
Well, I think one thing we could do maybe, you know, after reading this a couple times, how significant is a problem? I think get rid of it. And to this end, council members will not request city staff, blah, 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 of the city administrator or designee, which then allows Eric to at some point say, uh, department heads, take care of it. All right, you have my blessing to take care of.
That's good. I like that.
Five minutes.
Yeah.
But let him be the arbitrator of that and then have it so that workloads and work plans are not adversely affected.
And, and make sure that the city administrator is in the loop.
He's in, well, it says there, without the prior approval of the city administrator or designee.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Start.
My problem with this is that you're taking something that would take five minutes with one person and you're spreading it out over 10 minutes of two people.
No, I mean, not, that's where, or designee to where, at, uh, that Eric can then have a meeting, one of the next, uh, citywide meetings that he has with the department heads and say, here's, when, when and if we approve this, this is what this means here. So no, you're not taking 10 minutes. You could still do it at the same amount of time.
Okay.
Do you mind if I comment?
Oh, please do.
I agree that the word significant is, becomes sort of vague. You remove the word significant and then it, the language becomes, you can't request any work.
Right.
Uh, so you got to have something in between.
Yeah.
And even a 15-minute or a one-hour time limit, there might be a time when that person you're, you're making that request of is on a deadline for something and they need every last hour of their day to accomplish it.
Right.
Uh, but clearly the intent, based on the last session, is, is to not ask people to perform work which would adversely impact their workload, workload and work plans. Uh, but you're almost trying to legislate good judgment on the part of council members. And I think that's what you need to note. You've all shared examples of when you've been in this situation and you had to make a judgment call of when, when was right and when it was wrong, and, uh, and a willingness to back off if you knew that, you know, you didn't want to be the priority person. And I think Eric's sharing that staff members are likely to defer to you, uh, even when they shouldn't, uh, is just something that you need to recognize, uh, as part of the responsibility of the role that you've, that you're in. Um, so that doesn't help with changing the wording any, um, but I think the discussion just tonight has been helpful. This, this language, of course, originally was borrowed from some other municipality and, uh, and I, and I want to thank Counselor Reiser and Counselor Mercer, who I think were the only two current council members who were on the council at the time that we decided to, to bring this in as a basis for rules. Uh, but it's not like it was based on any incident that came up in this city or with any staff member or with any council member. It's just a, a model for language, uh, which essentially gets at the basic concept that they don't work for you, as you put it, Steve, uh, Counselor Johnson. Uh, so, uh, I think you all have come to a good understanding of that.
It was Hillsboro.
Hillsboro, yeah. I knew it was someplace that, uh.
I, I think the other thing that, um, and this is probably one of the issues I run into is, you know what? That's not going to, that'll be simple. They should just be able to push a button and take care of that and I'm done, and I'll be done and out of there. Well, in reality, they may have an hour's worth of time to find something, you know. I don't know what time it's actually going to take. I think it's not going to take very long. And so I just make my request. Well, and it may take considerably longer to do what I'm asking, and I don't realize that.
I've been in that situation and they have immediately said, you need to contact Eric. So that was deferred, that was with Jim, so.
Well, then that's.
Yeah, I need to get, go through Eric, so that.
Can, can, can our director say no to us?
Some can and some can.
They do. They do to me.
They, uh.
Yeah, they've said no to me.
There's, uh.
So, you know.
I, I really. I just don't bother them enough.
Whether it's me or anyone else, I think the fact that, that administrator is aware of the request and has knowledge, I think that's the, really the most important thing and how we, how we get from there to saying no or, or trying to define significant or, or trying to get between significant and.
Not at all.
Not at all, I think is really, um, really a judgment and case by case and, you know, um, I, I, I think, but again, I think it's important that anybody, anybody's just going to want to know about it, that's all, you know? And I think we're, I think we're okay on that, on that end, as long as we have some language that keeps that in play, I think that's, that's important.
So do we want to leave it as is or change it?
What was your thought again, Pat?
Well, or just to add, um, to delete the significant, but, I mean, after listening.
Out of all of the words there, significant bothers me the most.
So look up a thesaurus. What's another word for significant?
I don't want a synonym. I don't, don't want a synonym. I want more, more control over that.
Well, okay, here's an idea. So what if you said, "To this end, council members will not request city staff to perform significant work without the prior approval of the city administrator so that workloads and work plans are not adversely impacted." And then say something along the lines of, for the purposes of this section, significant means something that the employee would reasonably feel would take more than X amount of time to, to meet the request.
Five minutes?
Well, but that's, that's up to you guys. I mean, that's a, you know, I, you're right. I don't know what significant is going to be in the eye of the beholder, but.
Let's do 15 minutes. I like that language.
I'd like 10.
10?
If we're going to throw numbers out.
I'd be happy with five.
Five?
I like your 10. It's halfway.
How about 10?
Well, and I guess.
That's a compromise.
Yeah, and I, I'm not opposed to 10. I think one of the really important things is, this is dealing with Eric's staff and workloads and plans. Do you think 10 minutes is a reasonable timeframe?
I think 10 is. I think, um, I think again, as long as we have something in there that ensures that when that happens, that the administrator's aware of it.
Right.
And that's just really easy because it's putting them as a copy, you know.
All right.
I'm on board.
So are you going to write that up, David?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's not about the perfect, it's about the possible.
All right. Anything else in this section?
Uh, sorry, number three, um.
15 minutes on this last.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to go fast here. Uh, there was, uh, other questions. May, may redirect other questions to a council member or the city administrator. What is an example of other questions? Under number three. Well, that's from before. We just added city council in there. Well, it may have, you know, without and city council, it may have made more sense. The mayor may direct other questions to a council member or a city administrator as appropriate. Did, did the adding of the and city council into that sentence?
Muddy it?
Muddy it so that other questions is more difficult to answer.
I just think it broadens it.
Well, and I think it just, it's because they, it was pretty much in there twice. By adding the mayor and city council, it would then able them to delete that whole next sentence, I think is why that's there. Is that a good reading of that? Because the second, that slashed one just says the same thing other than city council.
Yeah, I think that's.
That's the way I took it.
Yep.
All right.
I think the term other questions was to distinguish between the types of questions specifically mentioned in the first sentence, which were questions regarding city personnel or administration. And other questions might be, for example, questions regarding an upcoming trial of a former, you know, staff person. Uh, we've had situations like that. So, uh, first of all, you know, it clarifies personnel administration questions and it doesn't limit this, and, and the, and the main thing that came up in our meeting was not limiting this restriction to just the mayor, but recognizing that the whole, entire council should share that same, uh, responsibility.
All right, are we good?
I like that.
All right. Next section is J minutes. Anything?
Three. Uh, there is a significant red line here that I don't, do not understand. Uh, the city recorder may only produce transcripts with council approval unless a transcript is required to establish a written public record of an interpersonal conflict involving a member of the council. I'd like more explanation on that.
HR type.
Yeah, I, I don't, I'm assuming this got some discussion during one of the sessions and I'd have to admit, I, I'm not exactly confident that I know what it. and I have to admit, I'm not exactly confident that I know what it is.
I think I do have a memory. Okay, maybe you weren't there, so that's why you're not speaking up. I think this was a time when one citizen member of the committee was concerned that if there was, you know, a significant give and take between two members of the council during a meeting and one of them was contending that, you know, I hate to use this term, it's thrown a lot, bullying or something going on, that they didn't want a person who felt they were victimized or involved in bullying to be restricted from getting a transcript to demonstrate, you know, the veracity of their, of their claim.
Protection, kind of.
Yes. So, I think that was the reason. One person was kind of pushing for this and out of respect, we included that, that language. But that's where it originated.
It was to clear the air faster if there was, there was a conflict that, or disagreement where they felt that a transcript needed to be made in a timely manner and so not to have to wait till the next council meeting to get approval. So, it...
See the opportunity for using this to, beginning very expensive very quickly. I mean, this, this could be used poorly as an excuse to keep the city recorder producing transcripts. I see problems here.
Well, if you couple that with the, what we just discussed, it would have, you know...
Have to go through Eric.
You know, the other part of this, though, is usually within one or two days, the entire video is on the city website. I would think if that wasn't sufficient, that you actually want to do a transcript before the transcriptionist actually does it and before the next meeting. That would be something probably pretty serious or something and I think that should require...
That would go through Eric.
That would require, um...
Let's step that through.
Council approval or something other than just, yeah, I, I'm not sure I like that language. There's other ways to get that same information off the same, off the city website within a couple of days.
I'd like to see the whole line struck.
I don't because I think people should be protected.
Yeah, but who's going to, who's going to decide whether there's an interpersonal conflict or not? Who's going to, who's going to define that?
Probably the person that's the victim would be the first one to define that because obviously they think there's something not quite right about the interaction and needs to be looked into.
What will a transcript do differently than a video?
Put it in writing. I don't know. But I just don't think it's right to limit it and say, no, I'm sorry, but you're not, you don't have access to that.
So, are the transcripts different than what I see?
It's the minutes, probably.
Well, but see, the minutes, if you read, I was going to say, the minutes, it's not the minutes because I read the minutes for our meetings and they're nowhere close to transcribed.
Right.
So, that's my question is, so transcription would mean a word for word?
Verbatim.
Okay, okay. So, how much would that so, Jackie, a rough idea? A ten-minute verbatim transcript, do you have any idea on a cost?
Depends on who she's trying to transcribe. If it's me, it takes like, you know, fifteen times to actually understand what I'm saying, you know. You know, there's, there are different, there are different levels of, I mean, isn't that the quality of the, sometimes?
It's the quality, the conversation that's being discussed. If, if somebody did a public records request for me to transcribe verbatim a section of a council meeting, I would probably guess about thirty minutes for accuracy. And then you would take my weighted annual, or hourly rate and it would be thirty minutes. So, it could be like thirty dollars to do that. And that's generally what we do with the public records requests.
Okay.
Really, if it comes to this point where you need a transcript, then Eric's probably going to be involved with the conversation. You're going to know what's going on.
So, why have the language? I mean, when it comes to...
Because that allows you to just go to Eric instead of involve the whole city council.
A council member can make a records request, yes. I mean, there's a difference in council members and members of the public. I mean, when I was absent a couple of times, I asked for a video of the meetings. I got it, was not charged for it, was part of my official duties and received it. If a member of public asked for that, there'd be a charge. Wouldn't the same thing be true here that...
Well, if you, if you read the first sentence, that's, that's what it says.
The recorder designee will make an audio recording of all meetings.
See, I see a problem here where a council member could request a transcript of the, of every entire meeting and state this as an interpersonal conflict. It could be abusive somewhere down the road. And I think that's, that's a problem. Somebody, somebody could abuse this because there's no check on it. It's up, it's subjective.
But there is a check.
It's up to the person who's making the claim.
Eric's the check.
Yeah, the city administrator's the...
Okay, but you've already got that protection in just asking Eric for it. By including this language, you haven't increased anything. I can make a public records, I could make a request to Eric tomorrow for a transcript of this meeting and he could say, I'm sorry, that's significant. You'll need to take that to council. Or yes, I, yeah, I'll have that done for you by tomorrow afternoon. I mean, it's already, we already have got that ability to do that. I don't, I guess I just don't see what this is doing different than what we've already got the authority to do.
So, you're saying we should scratch the whole paragraph except for the first sentence then? No, I'm saying scratch the red, the red ad.
The lower one, one three.
Unless the transcript is required to establish, is that what you're saying?
Yep.
David, what are your thoughts?
Well, I mean, I get the, I think this all gets down to that interpersonal conflict and the desire to, I get the, I get the idea. I think that there's some logic there. I do have a little bit of concern because as I read it, the concern I have is more the position it may put the city recorder in, frankly. Because someone's going to, I think it's true to say, who's, who's going to arbitrate what's an interpersonal conflict? I'm not saying that would come up much. It's probably mostly, most of the time, it's pretty obvious. People yell at each other or they, you know, it's been something that most, I think, any reasonable person would say, well, that, you know, a lot of conflict in that meeting. But this is an exception, right, where it would involve a significant amount of staff time. And if it is dealing with an interpersonal conflict, it's telling the city recorder to basically still produce that document. So, that person, I think, is sort of now in the position of having to say... I guess it gets back to some, maybe to some of Eric's point before. Hard to imagine that person saying anything but yes.
But again, this is significant, so it would have to go through Eric anyway.
Then I think making that clear here would probably help. That it would need to, that, that request would still need to go through the city administrator. Because right now, I read it just looking at it on its own and it seems to me that the council member could request that directly of the city recorder.
That's how I read it as well.
So, if we put something in there that said, that this would be considered significant?
And I'm not hearing one way or the other, but if you wanted to do that, maybe end with, in accordance with I-1C and that refers back to that.
Okay.
That gets back to the...
That goes back.
And note that the, unless the transcript was required, was added to a sentence that, that required council approval. So, I think the idea was if the council was the one who could approve whether or not a transcript would be made, a minority member of the council could have their, their wish to have a transcript made denied by the rest of the council. And so, I think this, this citizen on the committee was perhaps trying to protect the right of an individual who, who might not be able to get that approval from the rest by granting a blanket right to it. I don't see, I don't see the value in memorializing the council at its worst moment. I would rather see you memorial, you know, the times when you're exemplary in your, in behavior. But those things happen and I guess that's why it was important to that individual. Just so you understand the context of how the, how the conversation started.
Well, I think it should be removed.
Me too.
I agree.
I don't. I like it with that addition, with in accordance with I-1C.
I heard the question asked a couple of times of why it's there and I did not hear an answer to that. There was no reason for it to be there. Because you can get it anyway.
Not really.
Yes, you can.
It's online. I guess I have to agree.
Oh, it's online?
Yeah, so I don't... I'd have to agree. I don't think it's necessary because it is online.
So, what part do you think get rid of?
The new red underlined.
In the very last paragraph?
Yeah, that entire red line. Entire red edition.
On the bottom section.
Yep.
Well, I disagree, but Linda, well, we're the minority. If Linda votes to keep it or not, it doesn't matter. All right, so I guess we get rid of that whole red line. All right, anything else in that section? We're onto K. Anything in K?
Um, no.
Anything in L?
L, L1, the red lines minus the challenged member. I have two questions on that. Where did that come from and Mr. Doofman, is that legal? To exclude a city council member?
Yeah, I don't see a legal reason why you couldn't do that.
I've never seen that anywhere else in council rules. And it seems kind of arbitrary.
I think the issue is that if someone is alleging a bias in a certain instance, that it seems potentially to defeat the purpose of trying to determine... Presumably, that individual is going to, if there is a bias, vote in accordance with the bias. I'm not saying that means that there's a bias.
Yeah.
But it, by saying that individual can't participate in that, um, in that motion. I think that's, you know, I think that's the idea. I mean, that's what I would assume.
It makes sense.
I think that's what was discussed.
If they voted to conflict.
Well, I think it would be a perceived conflict.
Perceived conflict.
Obviously, if there's a real conflict of interest, that's a different story entirely. That's an ethical problem and the person couldn't participate. I think we're getting at here, you know, bias, that they prejudge something, they have a personal interest.
I've actually seen that one play out in this very room and I, I thought it was rather odd when the person that was being challenged was involved in the vote.
Yeah.
It just, it seemed, it seemed odd, but it was allowed for.
And I think, I think the thing to remember here is that, and I think this gets back to, is it, is it Michael?
Michael.
Some of Michael's comments, you know, a lot of this is going to depend upon essentially good faith among everybody involved. So, if part of the concern, Council Johnson, is that, well, this could be just a pretty blunt tool, you know. You're right. I suppose in the extreme, you could have a meeting that's, that's made up of nothing except people trading accusations about you're biased, you're biased, you're biased, you're biased. I'd like to think that at the end of the day, there'd be enough consideration to larger sort of issues about civics and about, you know, ultimately getting business done that, that would act as a, as a guard against that. But theoretically, that could happen. I mean, I, I think the fact that it doesn't often, I mean, I'm thinking of one example maybe in semi-recent past should maybe allay that concern, but...
So, do we want to get rid of it or do we want to keep it?
Well, just one thing and recall too, this is not just talking about a council member accusing another council member of bias. It's a proponent or opponent of any, any decision to be made on a quasi judicial matter. So, a citizen who's, you know, has some issue related to their property, land use, is the one who might say, you know, Mr. Reisner just lives two doors down and I don't think he should vote on it. And then the rest of the council would, would decide. It's not accusing each other, probably.
Good point, good point. I mean, it could be.
Yeah, it could be.
Not limited to that, but generally speaking...
But I think that the times when it comes up, you probably see it more in Planning Commission than you would in city council, but occasionally, the city council has those kinds of decisions too.
Okay, so do we want to leave it or take it out?
I'm fine leaving it.
I'd say leave it.
Tom?
I don't have a problem.
Okay. Anything else in L? All right, M, ex parte contacts and disqualification, anything?
I think the key here is quasi judicial, you know, so...
All right, N, Oregon Government Ethics Commission requirements and reporting. O, Oregon Public Records Law.
Well, by the way, hopefully everyone's gotten their SEI for it and you don't have to admit it.
They're a lot easier online now than they are paper money.
It is.
All right, P, legal advice? Q, this was Roberts Rules of Order, change it to the standard code of parliamentary procedure?
Ooh, ooh.
Yes.
I could use some explanation on why this was come up with. Because I had never really heard of it before and so I went and did some research. And what I found on Google has got to be true. But according to that, out of all of the people that have a parliamentary procedure, only about eight percent use this. Roberts Rules are meant for, to cover absolutely any situation under any circumstance. You can open it up and there is the process. According to the one article I wrote, the standard code of parliamentary procedure probably only covers half or less of possibilities that you may never see in your lifetime or you may see once or twice, who knows? But it just, I don't know of anybody else that's using this.
This came from League of Oregon Cities. This is their recommendation for small, for municipalities because the Roberts Rules of Order is made for very high-level parliamentary procedures where Sturgis is made for smaller jurisdictions.
It's easier to read too.
So, that's where this came from.
So, what cities here in the metro area are using this?
I have no idea.
I, I, I think we ought to just stick with Roberts. I mean, that's, that's what has been used, that's what's been used forever. It's not perfect, but it's understood. Our attorney understands it, uses it, you know. And so, I, I really think we ought to stick with Roberts. This is, you know, council rules are things that can be adopted later and given an opportunity to look through some of this and maybe consider it. But I, I don't want to be number one. I would like to stick and this just doesn't seem to be something that needs to be changed.
I would recommend reading it first before you make a...
I know there are other cities and I can get that list for you tomorrow. I went to the League of Oregon Cities.
David, are you, any cities you represent, your office represents using this, that you know of?
Well, we used to represent Sherwood. I feel like they do. I can't swear by that.
I think West Lynn does.
Does, okay.
I believe so. That was one of the people that I talked to.
But, I mean, you know, I think the, the fact is, is that certainly Roberts is more of an entrenched, for better or worse, I'm not, I think Roberts can be enormously kind of wordy at times. But it is something that I think most, certainly people in my sphere are more familiar with simply because more people, it's been around longer, more people use it. But I don't personally have any issue with, with the Sturgis manual. I do think there are parts of it that are actually a lot easier to understand, so...
That's why they did it.
Michael? No, I had heard of it the first time at this meeting too and so I... Uh, no, I had heard of it the first time at this meeting, too, and so I didn't have a big stake one way or the other, but I, I've been in large group settings where having the, the rules of, of Robert's Rules made it, you know, was conducive to reaching a decision, and if there's something that works better in a small group, you know, it might be considered. But I understand the idea that if we've said we're going to look at these rules from year to year, uh, maybe if you ran a meeting one time where you, I don't know the differences enough to be able to really, to have an opinion one way or the other.
Yeah, well, that's also, uh, true in that you still make motions, you still, you know, uh, need seconds. Uh, they're similar in more ways than they're not. One thing that surprised me is they have been around for sixty-seven years. Apparently, they came, first came out in nineteen fifty, and, um, until I had a chance to sit down and, and read through that book, I wasn't convinced that it was worth changing for, but it sure makes it a lot easier to read, and, uh, like mentioned, it's not as wordy, and, um, I would recommend, since we're not adopting this tonight, is take some time and read through it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, the only one I'm familiar with is Robert's Rules, and I belong to two other organizations, and that's what we follow. I'm not familiar with that.
So do we want to not change it then for now, or what do you want to do?
I say change it to the standard code of parliamentary procedure, known as Sturgis.
I think not change.
I'd like to not change.
Linda?
I don't, really, one way or the other.
You get the big bucks to make decisions one way or the other.
I've read Robert's Rules so many times, I'd rather just keep that, so I don't see any...
Okay, so then we're keeping it Robert's Rules.
But I wouldn't like to look at that.
Yeah, it's...
Sure.
I can transcribe it for you.
Well, that's all right. I won't take your time.
All right, next section?
I have to, uh, full disclosure to let you know that my dad is from Sturgis.
So he loves...
Ah!
Okay, R, commissions, boards, committees, organizations, and media.
Number two, council member participation, um, on page twelve, there's been a line added, "To be, council members may or encourage to attend meetings," and then in red, "It's been so long as a quorum of the council is not present." Um, open meetings laws, I'm going to play a lawyer here, so keep, keep me in check here, David, um, say it's not that a meeting occurred, it's the purpose of the meeting, and if the purpose of the meeting is not to deliberate or make decisions, it's okay for a quorum of council members to be present. I would point out, just for clarity, that at our most recent Cities Dinner here in Gladstone, all five of the county commissioners were there. So a quorum of county commissioners were there, but they were not there to deliberate or make decisions. I'm worried that if this stays in as it's written, um, A, it's, it seems to me to be in conflict with open meeting laws, and B, it could be used against council members if a quorum showed up in a social setting.
Like the city dinners was not considered a meeting, but...
Yeah, I guess, it, I think it, you know, the narrow def, if you look at this, I think the narrow definition is meant to be something that is a public meeting, and maybe that needs to be clarified, because Steve is, Councilor Johnson is right, not every, not every quote-unquote "small" meeting where more than a quorum may be present would necessarily need to be noticed and considered a public meeting, subject to the public meetings law.
At the Planning, at the Planning Commission, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I just want to put this in, and at the Planning Commission Work Session on the Transportation Services Plan, there were four commission, four council members present in this room.
That was a work session?
And that was, and that was, that was a meeting. Okay, it was a work session.
But it is a meeting. I mean, that, there's...
A work session would be considered a...
Yeah, that's a, that's, so a public meeting is anything in which you, if it's a public meeting, if it meets the definition of a public meeting, we had to give notice, you know, um, it has to be open to the public, you have to be able to take minutes or video, and so certainly having a body like the Planning Commission consider a planning document that will ultimately be forwarded to you, all for consideration and adoption, that meeting would be a public meeting. Um, but something like a dinner, right? Social events. Um, they aren't unless, they, they can become public meetings, this is sort of the tricky thing, and it's sometimes why you'd see, I don't know if the county does this, uh, but, you know, where they would notice for something like that, you know? I don't know how they go about recording it or whatever, but, but there is that concern that, well, wait a minute, does that become something where those, in that case, those five people, or a quorum of them, start talking about business that would otherwise come before the Board of County Commissioners?
I've noticed, and not to interrupt you, but I've noticed with the county commissioners, when they're all there together, they all kind of just spread out.
Yep, yep. They were all at different tables.
And they don't stay in a group.
Right. And so, and to this point, there really isn't, it was a notice, like this thing before the Planning Commission, when they considered the TSP, well, that was a notice public meeting. So theoretically, it was okay that the council, four members of the council were there, because it was noticed, it was being recorded, it was, everything was being done publicly. Um, it gets much dicier if, if those four got in and started talking about the merits of the transportation system plan in that meeting, right? Because that's something that we would expect you would do when it comes before you, you know, for consideration, so...
And can we consider changing this to read, "Council members may or encourage to attend meetings in accordance with Oregon Open Meetings Laws"? Would that cover it?
Yeah, or, or, yeah, or, you know, so long as such attendance doesn't violate Oregon Public Meetings Laws?
Well, like, we are in a meeting right now that meets the, the requirements for Open Meetings Laws.
Correct.
Um, so if we were all huddled around a table in an unnoticed meeting, we haven't met the requirements for Open Meetings Laws.
Well, depending on what, if you were all huddled around a table and were talking about what you're going to do this summer...
Right.
Then I would say, no, you can do that.
Yeah.
The, the problem is, is that how often are four of you going to get together and talk about stuff that has absolutely nothing to do with the city's business? I mean, I'm not saying you can't, of course you can. It's just hard, so, um...
You get into this, the squishy matters-of-the-day issue at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think if you had something that, if, if others feel, you know, this is worthwhile, I mean, "Council members may or encourage to attend," I think the idea here is, so attend meetings, um...
So long as it does not...
Should it say "social and public meetings" to kind of define what we're talking about? Social, public meetings? The one thing that, we experienced this, I don't know if you remember this, but we had the, Oregon City was hosting a West presentation. I sent out a note, said, "Hey, who's going?", and I heard from three, I think, said they were going, two or three, and a couple of you had something changed to where you could go, but my intent was to find out if there was going to be a quorum there, so that I could just notify.
Remember that, yeah.
There might be a quorum, and that's what I think Public Records Law, or Public, I'm sorry, Public Meetings Law, not requires, but suggests that it, even if it's a, a meeting like that, it's informational, that you should make every effort to at least let the public know that, hey, they're attending this dinner, or they're attending this public information meeting, you know, and, and I think it even in the language talks about no, there's no decisions being made, and...
No deliberations.
No deliberations.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's, actually comes right out of public meetings. And I'm not blaming anybody for what happened.
Right.
I'm just saying that schedules changed, and I did get a nice little note from Greg Geist about that, but that's, it's not a matter of...
So then if we said, um, "To attend meetings so long as it does not conflict with Oregon..."
Public Meetings Law?
Yeah, I think, and I think that's, they actually specifically, I don't know if it's in a workbook or what it is, but they specifically recommend that that's how you...
So do you got that, David?
Yeah, so long as...
It does not conflict with Oregon Public Meetings Law. All right. Anything else in that section?
Just to say, I appreciate the conscientiousness of the council in this. I think that the entire section that we're referring to is really talking about city boards, commissions, and what the other term was, councils, commissions, boards, and committees. Um, so it's not so much meant to refer to a dinner, or...
Social functions.
Yeah, but I recall recently, I think one of the open houses, Downtown Revitalization and Transportation, when, I think, Councilor Johnson, you walked in, you became either the fourth or fifth person there, but you pointed out clearly to everyone that even though there were, there was a quorum present, so to speak, you were there for an informational gathering event, not a decision-making meeting, and in that case, you were not in violation. And that's the kind of thing the public, you know, it's good, it's good when the counselors are cognizant of that, and when you make the public aware of it, so that, you know...
Perception.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, I mean, I think that's, again, having, I think it's really, even at social functions, I mean, I know maybe it's a, maybe it's a bridge too far, but particularly at something like that, where you're talking about, yes, it's clearly, you know, addressing city business, it's not that the, they're going, people are going to listen to somebody give a presentation, there will be no deliberation, there would be no decision made, um, but perception, you know, I think, kind of compels doing something along the lines of what the county would do, which is, you know, sit apart from each other. So it's, you know, abundantly clear to people that there could be no allegation, oh, well.
Okay. All right, the next one is S, City Administrator Evaluation. Anything on this one?
S3, uh, "Contracts normally will be approved as a consent agenda item. Why not a regular agenda item?" I realize it could be pulled out of the consent, but it just reads strange to me.
Oh, this was the...
Oh, that's what they started with.
This is what we had back...
Yeah, we didn't...
From the beginning, we didn't mess with it.
I get that, I realize there's not a red line here, it just, that word jumped out at me, so...
Which word was that, here?
Consent.
He wants it in the regular agenda, not a consent agenda.
Contracts normally will be approved as a consent agenda item at the next council meeting. Why not regular agenda?
Because if somebody wants to pull it out of the consent agenda and discuss it, then there's that option.
That is an option, certainly.
Mm-hmm. Same reason, just leave it like it is. I mean, we've already got it there.
All right.
Yep.
All right, T, Council Expenses?
Uh, reimbursement, uh, number one. If you read that sentence carefully, I know we've just dealt with this, second sentence, "Council, counselor expenditures for other than routine expenses," and then in parentheses, "examples, conference registration, travel, et cetera, require advanced mayororal approval." That reads to me that this is open to council members' judgment. Am I reading that wrong? And there do not appear to be any limits. And I'd like to go back to France.
Well, but it says...
Or the record, that's a joke, so...
Follow the same rules and procedures for reimbursement as city employees.
City employees.
So we'd have to just see what that, I would assume that probably anything over fifty dollars, or probably any class they go to, has to be approved.
Yes, it's, it's a pretty tedious process.
Okay, all right.
All right, anything else in T?
Um, I do have one question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, who would approve the mayor's?
When you go through the city administrator, when you ask him to approve it?
I mean, I know you're going to Disneyland, but I don't want the city to pay for it.
No, not happening.
But I guess that's...
Because if there was something that was out of line, I mean, Eric would absolutely flag it, or Carolyn would probably flag it, or Jackie would flag it.
Yeah.
You know, but Eric doesn't have the authority to stop it, nor Jackie.
Why not?
Well, but would it come to our attention?
Yeah.
Right. Well, that, well, all I'm saying is, the way it's worded, everything would require advanced mayor approval.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not picking on you, but there's no approval process for a mayor.
Could have the council, council president?
City administrator?
That's where I would go, back to the city administrator.
Except the city administrator works for the council, not the other way around.
Right. If nobody else has a problem with it, I'm fine with it, too. It just was something that I noticed when I read it.
No restrictions per the, the city policy, so...
Leave it as is.
But the city...
You know, this came, I'm sorry, I don't want to get mixed up with the question at hand, but this came up recently for, I think Linda wanted to go to a conference.
Right.
So if I read this, you could have gone without the mayor, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the way I read it.
Yeah, is this, does anybody, because it sounded like when we were...
But we had discussion on it, and she approved it.
Yes, but I don't think she had to.
She didn't have to.
But I didn't have to, yeah.
At least that's the way I'm reading.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that. I read it that way.
It says, you know, "routine expenses," for example, conference registration, travel, et cetera. So presumably...
Get rid of that?
Presumably, if someone wants to go to a conference, they would do the same thing that anybody else would in terms of city staff. That's, I think, what, what Council McMahon's point was, is that there are rules and procedures, those aren't listed here, but they exist somewhere.
But the rules and procedures are in steps. If it's a public works employee, they have to have it approved through the public works director.
Mm-hmm.
If it's the public works director, he has to have approval through Eric. If the council's doing it, they have to have mayoral approval, is that...
Or anything above and beyond, something...
Yeah, it says, "Expenditures for other than routine expenses require advanced mayoral approval, mayor approval." So I guess there's a question as to, I don't know enough about how this works, I mean, when you, is there nobody that would approve, are you saying, Council Sickman, that if you wanted to go to a conference?
I would ask the mayor.
Okay.
That's not what this says.
Right.
Okay, then I missed, okay.
I don't think so either. I think it, it seems to say that that's something that would be considered a routine expense.
Okay.
So if we went to the LOC conference in September, we would, um, just coordinate that through Tammy, and...
She'd probably ask me to sign it, you know?
Right.
And it's, it would have to match up with a budget, and that's all we would be doing.
Yeah, so there's checks and balances.
I have a different reading of this, though. I think the, the examples, conference registration, travel, et cetera, are meant to be examples of expenditures that are other than routine.
Okay, see, that's not clear. I agree with you, that could be, it could be read that way.
I think that's the only time you, the only reason you'd have a sentence like that would be to say that.
It's ambiguous.
Which is why we brought Linda Neese's request to council, because I believe Eric and I were reading it that we needed approval.
For example.
So, it depends, yeah, this is, man.
Fix that one, David.
Are we talking about, is, is the example describing routine expenses, or other than routine expenses?
Examples of other than routine expenses.
And let's just make it clear, one way or the other, here, I mean, I think that's what we need to do.
That's why I wanted, because I think people...
Okay, so just put that in there, that these are examples of other than routine expenses.
So, okay, so in that case, then, a request to go to the League of Oregon Cities Conference would run through the mayor?
Right.
Right.
And actually, I've done that in the past, and some other training that I did through League of Oregon Cities a couple of years ago, um, I, back with Wade, and then also with Dominic.
Okay, so is that fine?
So I'm going to...
I'm sorry, so the process, you'd go through what the employee goes through, and then at the bottom, the mayor would sign?
Yeah.
So what I'm going to say, then, this is how it'll be revised, is that counselor expenditures for other than routine expenses, and then instead of saying, "E.g.," I'm going to say, "Examples of non-routine expenses include..."
Right. Perfect. There we go.
It doesn't necessarily have to come to a council meeting, it can be done.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right, anything else in T? That's it.
Question, is there a line item budget for council, travel, and training experiences? Okay, so...
We do have a line item.
It's like ten thousand?
Counsel expenses and...
Yeah, we want to, yeah, what we want to do is...
I'll be fast.
We, we've recognized that, that council is a lot more active in that area, so we, we actually budget it for what we believe is, is going to be, kind of, the way the new council is...
It wasn't ten thousand dollars?
I don't think so.
Yeah, it was apparently, I don't know...
I think it was only like five thousand in the past, but you guys are more active with memberships and conferences, so we wanted to make sure there was enough in there. memberships and conferences, so we wanted to make sure there was enough in there, and I think really the checks and balances for us, too, is to make sure there's money in there before the mayor approves it. But I can also give an example, when Eric was gone a couple of weeks ago, the mayor submitted receipts for reimbursement, and we have a standard form that we fill out, so I followed the same process an employee would, I took her receipts, matched them up with the items that were on the reimbursement form, Carolyn Gray then double-checked them, and we both signed off on it, and we did that because Eric wasn't here, but we are always making sure that somebody other than yourself is signing off on those.
I have one more thing on council rules, and Tom, this is something that you might want to, there was a resolution that approved both the council guidebook and the council rules, I'm sorry, I thought I had it in this, it's not, it's not in this, it is a rather confusing resolution, and it seems to say that the council handbook, guidebook and council rules both apply, which has caused some confusing situations where things have been pulled out of the guidebook that weren't in the rules, and vice versa. I think that we should look at a new resolution when we get to it that decouples the two, like the guidebook is fine, I think the guidebook is, it helps to explain a lot of stuff, charter, ordinances, et cetera, et cetera, but it should not be used as council rules.
True, and I believe Michael came up with the new title for the guidebook, wasn't it, or was it, was it Jeff?
I don't know.
I think, well, we talked about it being a resource for the citizen-
Right.
That you'd have all that, all of that-
One.
The rules, the roles, the charter, everything would be in one document.
And I think, looking back historically, the two documents were adopted by two separate resolutions, one was 1028, that was for the rules, and then the guidebook was adopted by a different resolution, so, I may be wrong on that, but I think-
No, no, you're right, I can't remember what the, what the numbers were.
Sort of a citizen guidebook, or something like, I forget.
But you understand-
I'd have to look at my notes.
Yeah, but I, you make a good point, you don't want to know which one supersedes the other, or, yeah, or confuse the two, and say, you know, here's a rule from the guidebook, when you really should be looking at rules that you are constantly amending and updating.
Yes, that's, that's what I mean, can we, can we do that?
Yeah.
The intent of the guidebook is really to make a layman's version, an explanation about how the rules are applied, so that the citizens, okay, who have a question, how they're going to do with something, okay, enter the council and say, gee whiz, okay, this is the way we deal with, like, we were talking about the question about the getting Eric's permission, okay, there's a portion in there that explains that, so people understand that it's not $10.15, it's, see, if it needs to be talked with Eric, and explains why, and I believe, and I looked at that before we started all this, that there, that the guidebook is needed, it will help, okay, but I think there's things in it that can be updated, and should be updated.
Sorry, it's a work session, I wanted to get that to you before you left.
So did I answer your question, or?
As long as the council rules are clearly superior, and the guidebook is not used in lieu of council rules.
And that's what it was meant to be in the first place.
Okay.
It says that specifically, and I haven't written this, written that thing for years, but it specifically says, it's only in a layman's language, not the rules.
I will have to find a resolution to be sure, but I don't think the resolution is as clear as, as that.
So what you, what we could do-
Resolution 1028 adopted the rules. Resolution 1032 adopted what was probably the guidebook, but the title of the resolution was, "A Resolution Adopting Council Rules for the Gladstone City", so the two went by the exact same title, that's where the confusion lies.
There you go.
But it was this 1032 was the resolution that adopted the guidebook, and it was done in November of 2013, and the other one was done in September of 2013.
Perfect, so for clarity, can we clean that up?
Yeah, I think what we would do is just, in the ultimate resolution that adopts these changes, we may get, have a section in there that says, you know, notwithstanding any other provision in a resolution, that the, the rules are what govern the council's, you know, conduct, it's what controls, and that the guidebook is there as a, as a helpful tool for the council, and for, but it has no authority-
In the public, I think, and I think, and I think if we, instead of calling it council guidebook, we call it citizens' guidebook, I think that would make it even easier to understand. Can I bring up one other point regarding that, and there is a little bit of conflict potentially, because I know there's another group looking at commission boards, committees.
Right.
If you go to page 11, we actually are in the council rules, talking about the ability of the council to appoint to these committee, commission boards and committees, create an ad hoc, encourage broad, citizens shall not serve more than two city commissions, boards, or committees simultaneously, and they may, with the consent of the council mayor, but the consent of the council mayor may remove a citizen from a citizen committee prior to the expiration, so I don't know how much of that is overlapping with the work that you all are doing.
Well, we, well, we discussed when we went through this section, that your subcommittee was working on this, so we didn't make any changes just kind of on the fly, we're anticipating that work that you've, you've been doing, or now have done, will possibly-
Possibly modify it.
Yeah, modify it, or strengthen.
Make it consistent.
Or should it be removed altogether?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't know, it just seems like we got some overlap. I think there will be significant changes, that may end up being in conflict with this.
It might be, because it might be a separate document we're proposing, that I don't know if it needs to be in here.
Maybe I would recommend that we don't put this on the council schedule for adoption until that committee's completed and that's before us, so that way we can make sure any changes that are in that, either we take this section out of here, or we make sure that whatever's done in that committee that we prove of comes into here, so we don't have two documents conflicting with each other at the same time.
Well, I thought that's what we were going to do, this is just a work session for this, and we were going to, we were going to wait till we went through what you guys did-
Right.
And then, and then-
Yeah, then put them together.
Yeah, well, not necessarily put them together, but, you know, probably adopt them at the same time. So there's going to be some part of this that will probably wind up taken out, because you guys are going to address it.
Right, by this, yeah, so that it reflects what you're doing.
Because this definitely was not scrutinized as close as maybe we-
The rest of it.
Right, we would have, because we knew what you guys were doing. The other thing, do we need to go back to the council guidebook and make sure that these edits are done in the council guidebook as well?
In time, I think we need to get through this first, and that's always was the follow-up.
Okay.
All right.
It's one point, I just want to make sure.
All right, so, I don't, do we have anything else for this, I know we have an executive session after this.
Do we need to do an agenda change to add the executive session?
Yeah, if we haven't done it already, we'll get it now.
We have not.
Is there anything else on this?
No.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I do have one speaker card here, I'd like to know if you are taking comments.
Normally at a work session, we don't, so is it something you could hold until the next?
When you sit out here and you hear what you guys talk about, it brings up issues. If you don't address them now, they get swept under the rug.
Okay, because like-
I have three minutes, I, 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 citizen, I would like to think I can take three minutes more of your time to address them.
That's fine, three minutes of our time, but if you can make it shorter than that, that would be great.
I just wanted to, first of all, I want to start popping-
Michael, thank you very much for-
Thank you, you were the right guy for the job, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Michael.
And you're not off the hook yet, there's other things we're going to get you to do.
Greg Alexander, Gladstone, I just want to say, first of all, I think that was, that Linda had an excellent idea on that Eric should trust his department heads, you know, like you would trust your, anybody else under you in the military or anything, and give them, you know, leeway. The other thing is, I just talked about that earlier, about the, you know, using your position, or that personal for personal gain, gifts to the public or city officials, and it just seemed that you had a big, big problem with the word significance, Steve, and I don't know why, because, you know, it, and in the interpersonal conflict, I'm just telling you from a citizen out here looking at it, that if you guys want to change this wording, I think it should be done, I think anything that happens before today should be referred to by the way recognized in any future dealings as the way it reads today, so you can go change the words and use them however you want, and get, you know, try to change it to benefit you, and if that's the case, I also just accidentally and luckily brought this, City of Gladstone, where I requested records, and it was for $1,225, so I guess what I want to know is, Eric, can I get your permission to get staff to give me that? You know? Well, no, I mean, that's just-
Sign the letter.
Not me.
No, it was Jackie.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wondered if, if it went through you, you know, because it just seems like changing that word, then people can say, you know, oh, it's Eric O'Kate, is Eric O'Kate, you know what I mean, and, and that's, you know, you could get whatever, I mean, and then that would also be a, go back to this chapter of 244, where it would be an ethics violation, so, I just wanted to bring that up, let you know, because when you sit out here and you guys talk, then you can't address it from out here until the end, and that's why I like the fact that you, I didn't know this was a work meeting, I don't know the difference between the meetings or when I can and can't talk, but I just wanted.
Thanks, Greg. All right.
You're good.
All right, so-
Make a motion that we adjourn our work session number two.
Not, not until we have an agenda correction.
So we will be adding a, an executive session, you want me to go just read through the, I'll do it right now, it just makes, it makes sense.
It's the same that I just gave you.
I was heading out for a moment, but I guess I will.
Not quite yet.
Okay, so the Gladstone City Council and Mayor Sample will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192662H to consult with legal counsel regarding litigation filed or likely to be filed. Recognized representatives of the news media and council authorized staff members may attend, all other persons must leave the room and are respectively requested to do so. Now, members of the media are specifically directed not to report on the topics discussed, the deliberations, and the deliberations that occur during the executive session, city councillors are similarly reminded not to discuss executive session topics and deliberations with any third party, including without limitation, family members, other appointed officials, for example, planning commission members, library board members, et cetera, city staff and volunteers, members of the public, and members of the media. Presence of the media while the city's legal counsel is discussing matters with the council is not intended to, nor does it waive the attorney-client privilege that attaches to those communications and any related documentation. If a final decision on any matter is legally necessary, the council will make that decision when it is back in regular session. Thank you very much.
Okay, so now someone makes a motion?
I did, I have someone-
Hold on, wait a sec, wait a second, Natalie, do I second?
I'll second it.
A motion was made to cancel, to adjourn the work session by Councilor Neil Reisner, seconded by Councilor Linda Neese, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Work session over at 8:29 PM, we'll take a five-minute break.
When are we going to respond?